This conference will now be recorded.
We'll start with the role call.
Hey, Mr. LeShir, here. Ms. Holloway.
Here.
Mr. Jensen, here. Ms. O'Kan.
Here.
And Mr. Kish.
Here.
Sir, you have a oral.
All right. And our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is Chair Rotation Discussion. And...
That was requested by Mr. Jensen?
That's fine, it's been a year. It's cool. Before we get into that, I just wanted to go over a couple of things that has to do with that. We're going to be talking about the lawyer and use of the lawyer and whatnot. And I was accused of having a secret meeting with a member, a landowner, and a lawyer, which I thought if it was secret, nobody would know about it. But the landowner happened to tell the other board member that we were having a meeting. So evidently, it wasn't a secret. But anyway, I figured the lawyer would know if that was a breach of any rules. And so, I just want to make it clear that I'm here to represent anybody in the district. Okay, the people that are in the district come first. Not the district management company, not the lawyer, nobody. That's what comes first. Anyway, the reason we had the meeting was to prevent the state's attorney's office from coming after Cal for breach of Sunshine laws and not releasing information. I was trying to stop that. That was the whole purpose of the meeting. Tony provided the information that the gentleman was asking for because Cal didn't have access to that. We got them, all that information from the court records.
Well, just briefly, to the extent that you are correct in meeting with the chair and a member of the community requesting the counsel to be there or the attorney to be there, is not a violation of any rules or law provision.
Right.
I wasn't aware of the second component with regards to Mr. McNamee's assertions with regards to...
That was, I was trying to prevent that. I never...
I was not aware of that.
Right.
As to the other documents that are numbered, I've mentioned to Cal, I mentioned to the chair, I mentioned to Mr. McNamee. I have, as part of the effort on my behalf to educate myself as to the history of the assessments. Dan Cox provided two through ring binders of the pleadings and bankruptcy filing about the hotel. There's extensive materials in there on the assessment history. I then went into the bankruptcy court files online, it's called Pacer, we have a subscription to it. And retrieved a number of other documents that were helpful to go back to 1990. Mr. Benson had an affidavit, his deposition, Cal had an affidavit. A guy who used to be with Seven Trent had an affidavit about the whole assessment process, the applications, and the history of it that's been the same since 1990. Which I thought was tremendously helpful to understand the history.
But the assessments for everything was there except for vacant land?
No, that was vacant land. The original assessments were back in 1990, it was all vacant.
But, yeah, it's all vacant. But, anyway, okay.
That was part of the discussion, I'll give Mr. McNamee a number of those. I have, yep, I gave them to Cal, and Cal's made them available to Mr. McNamee by email and I'm not sure if on flash drive or physical presence.
Right, okay.
But also, it was not a secret meeting, it's all in my offices.
Correct. And during this whole process and the communications and why I had everybody send all the emails between the district manager and myself is because that the district manager asked me if I was representing Steve and if whether it was correct or not. And that's when I determined that I represent everybody, okay? I'm not representing Tony, I'm not representing Premier, I'm not representing him. I represent the people that live here, the land property owners. I don't represent renters, which is another thing I want to bring up about when you come up to talk. I would appreciate that if anybody comes up to talk, you give me your property address and whether you're a renter or an owner. That's just, you know, off the cuff. So, but, okay, now we can go on to...
Mr. Chairman, for me, just briefly also, in my opinion, based upon my communications with Cal and email, I'm not aware of any violations of Chapter 119 of Public Records Law in the manner in which Cal has responded. And the Sunshine law is, the Sunset Section deals with interactions of the board members. And that's a different animal than Public Records, they're nothing to do with.
Yeah, I don't know the legal...
People may assert that, but I disagree.
Right, okay. But that was the issue, okay? That's why we had the meeting, to prevent any litigation. And, because litigation is expensive. I have, I do have one of the, well, we're going to talk about the use of the lawyer anyway, but we'll get into that later. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that I represent people of the community, nobody else. And not one over another. I represent Orchid Cove. I don't represent the Marina. I've talked to Scott Preppin, I talked to Frank Lee over at Kay's Drive. I don't represent anybody, I just listen. And I'm only one person. I don't make all the decisions. It takes, you know, four or five of us to make a decision, so... Okay, I'm done.
I think the problem has nothing to do with any of this, not that it was an illegal meeting. I think the problem is, the rest of the board was unaware of it. And we felt, I felt, I can't speak for them, but I felt we should have known about it. I'm not the person that was on the board that Steve went to, okay? And he told, he told that person about the meeting quite freely. But, the real problem is, in my own opinion, and I'm the first one to shut it down, I don't think any of us, with the things we're dealing with, should be talking to any of these people outside of this venue. I just don't. And I was the first one to get contacted by Steve and by Scott. And I said, "Guys, I don't think I should be talking to you." Okay? And most recently, including today, I've recused myself from anything that has to do with Scott Preppin. Not because he's doing anything wrong, not because I did, but because there is that perception that's possible. Having said that, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Russ, it really feels like you're selling them to me. I mean, it's not just you're representing them, I mean, you're pushing it hard at every meeting, hard. And a lot of people have asked, "What is in it for this guy? Is he a partner?" And I found myself saying, "No, we've asked him," and he said, "No." How come he's pushing so hard?
Let me explain that, okay? Forty-five years as a pharmacist, all I do is follow rules, okay? State rules, federal rules, A plus B equals C. And then, it's brought to my attention that we cannot explain to an individual in the community how we got to the assessments and the charges that are in their property. We ask for history to know the plans, because they say, "Okay, that vacant land there, the vacant land here is based on a plan." Okay, show me the plan. Where is it? You show me the plan and I'll believe the history. Okay? Nobody showed me. I asked for it. I didn't get it. All right? Show me what was planned for those five acres over there, that there's $40,000 worth of assessments on that property. Nobody gave it to me. So, how am I representing anything other than truth? I'm not trying to get anything other than a factual representation of what we're selling and what we're doing. And there isn't one. It's just all arbitrary.
But in...
And you proved to me that it isn't, before you argue with me anymore.
In kind, I'm not arguing with him.
He's not?
No.
You just said I had a special interest with him. I don't, I have a special interest with him.
No, I didn't say that either. I said it looks like. And not just to me, Russ.
Same thing.
But in contrast, when we were dealing with Zeman for six months, you weren't doing it, and none of us were doing it.
It never got far enough, it never got to it.
We went further than this.
They beat him up when they were here.
We went, that's our job, okay? We went further than this, Russ, way further than this.
We never established what they were going to pay for assessments of that property. Whether they were going to pay him upfront, whether they were going to accept the ERCs that were on it, whether we were going to pay, charge him, prorate them, nothing was discussed about that.
Because they didn't care. Now, let me drive the point, let me just drive the point one more. It's an elephant in the room. The hotel, the rumor is that this hotel is under contract and it's closing on December 1st. And it's a really good rumor, okay? We haven't heard anything about ERCs. They don't care. We haven't heard from them. The dormitory land is under contract. Someone, some phantom has it under contract since July, okay? Nobody's come to us about ERCs. And yet, and I'm just, I'm not picking on you, you happen to be the one. You, twice in meetings, said, "Well, what about if the hotel goes bankrupt and we're going to be sunk here and all stuff?" It's not going bankrupt. They just sold the damn thing. And frankly, it's been for sale since 2006. So, no one has ever brought up ERCs. No one.
So it didn't sell for 15 years, why?
Because they wanted $6 million for it and they sold off half of it. It was stupid what they were doing.
Well, anyway.
But anyway.
We're not in the real estate business, but my feeling on all this is I felt I was completely in the dark. And then, all of a sudden, I'm bombarded to get educated. I think that was something, what I do, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but how I handle it, if someone comes up to me and it's close to this meeting, I say, "Okay, I'll bring it up to the board." I share the information. And if it's right after our meeting, I ask them to contact Cal because I make the assumption Cal's going to share that information with us. So we're not in the dark. I think that's what frustrated me about the whole thing. Not the meeting, not what went on. I speak to Steve a lot on the street and I told him this face to face. His story changes every day.
Every day.
What he tells me today is true. I'm not saying he's lying. But I look a week later and it changes. And he has that right. But I can't pick up a ball and run with him.
Oh, I...
He's too unstable.
It's, it was just, all I'm telling you is I'm used to working with formulas, okay? And we don't have one. And that's all I was after, okay? The reason I didn't say anything about the meeting with Cal was Steve didn't want Cal to know about it because he figured Cal would be there. And he has a hard time expressing his train of thought when he's interrupted constantly. So, that's why he didn't want Cal there. So I figured, why should I tell Cal? He's not going to be there anyway. And I figured if there was a problem...
But how many emails have we read where Cal asks him, "What do you want to see?"
Right.
We can't get specifics.
He asked for the history on litigation.
That's a general thing.
History of litigation.
Well...
That's general.
But even that's public record, isn't it?
No.
Litigations?
Cases where the district is a party will either be in the state court files or the federal court files, depending upon the action.
Right.
And you can access the state court files real easily through the court's website. The federal court system is a little more difficult because you have to subscribe to a service for that. It's called Pacer and it's inexpensive once you get there, I mean, as far as the cost. But that's, those records are, to the extent they're not in the district's custodian of records files, they're not public records of the district. To the extent, now they are public records of the district. I gave them to Cal.
Yeah.
Good, bad, or indifferent, Cal, but you hit it. So now they are. And technically, when they're in my office, they're not public records. There's some attorney general's opinions on that. But I thought it would be beneficial for Cal to have those because those have a lot of the history. And I would think Cal had a lot of those records.
But if that request was made, was it mandatory that you have those records on file?
No.
No, in the public records law, in response to public records requests, you don't have to create a document. You just have to provide a document so you do that. But again, I thought, from my perspective, and I think from the district's perspective, and this, I think, my sending those to Cal occurred after the initial series of public records requests. If I'm not mistaken. I think they started back in August or September, September, I think. And I don't think I retrieved those and sent them to Cal until later point in time, after I'd scanned in what Dan Cox had provided.
Go ahead. But the basic question that he was asking here was the methodology of how the assessments were put on that property. And in Cal's contract, right in the first line, it says that he's in charge of assessment methodology. So he's...
But the board had already accepted a methodology which was set. That was...
Right. But the...
It's in the rules.
What was the methodology on that property?
What...
Or this property?
What I think might be helpful is, again, I went back in time and looked. Back in 1990 was the first series of resolution, that was the first borrowing. Back then, the statute did not require a validation of a borrowing with maturity of more than five years. It changed after that point in time. But there was a bond issue back in 1990. And that was for roads, drainage, water, and sewer, all four. And there were some resolutions, including allocations to parcels. And they use a Roman numeral numbers. I've talked about allocations, percentages, and dollars. And that's in the series of resolutions in 1990. Then after that, there's a month of annual resolutions, both debt service and O and M, using that same formula. Then in 2010, and correct me if I'm wrong, anywhere along the way, David, Cal, there was a bond issue for the water and sewer. And the utility ERC allocation in there was the same, as I recall, as the utility ERC allocation back 30 years earlier. In fact, and there's statements by Ron Benson, there's affidavits by Cal. There's a 2010 assessment report that gives some of the history of the parcels here. So I think that'd be helpful for the board to see all that.
But there's no history on the vacant land?
They're all vacant.
But there's no plan. He makes the assessments to the plans that people give him. He tells you how many ERCs you're going to need.
That's when it's sold.
Well, I think...
No.
When a development plan gets submitted, then we review whether or not there's adequate ERCs on that property.
So there had to be a plan submitted to get the ERCs on that property, that's all we were asking for.
Does it go according to Collier County's...
I don't have to go to Collier.
Way of assessing what you could put on that, the code of what can go on that land?
What I think might be helpful is, it's going to be a big binder, putting together a hard copy binder for everybody with a number of these documents.
Well, we're doing that. The history. We're doing that right now.
But I think by actually seeing the hard copy, I think the board can then go as opposed to the rules we're having. You can see the history, you can see the documents we're talking...
I don't need to see all the history. Just show me the plan that it's based on.
That's it, it starts in 1990.
That's all I need. I don't need anything else.
I think that original 1990 plan was based upon what land was here existing and what the original developer had anticipated, its anticipated uses, whether it's going to be commercial, whether it was going to be residential tourist, whether it was going to be single family and so forth. And that's how those determinations were made.
This was never, this whole district is just a big rectangle. It was never platted, right? Am I right in saying that? When the CID came in and it was partially built already, but it was never platted because it was partially built already, which you and I have this discussion. That's why we're a CID and the other 23 are CDDs. And all the others, like Orchid Cove, the developer hands it to a board of directors and it's a community development district. This place was half-built or quarter-built. It had some buildings, had an airport. And it was actually a remnant of Ramuta Ranch. It goes way back. So I don't think that there's a master plan, which is what he's asking for. I don't think it was ever platted. I've never seen it platted.
So it was arbitrary?
Well, it wasn't that because at some point, what happened was the CID came in and they had to designate, there are only, there's a specific number of ERCs that the county allowed, the county. It's, I forget how many, but it's a specific number. And you can't go over that. So the county gave the original people that. They went around with an engineer and they said, "Okay, this is this, this is that, what do you want for this?" These pieces were all privately owned except for over here. So, that's what happened. Now, do I agree? It could be in the dark, it could be, okay? But what we have to realize is, this board inherited a horror show, okay? I sat here and the first thing I did a year ago was, "Let's find out where we're at." And I asked for this. All right? $25,000 to find out where our infrastructure is at. Then, we've asked for the history because we don't have any. And I'm amazed that from 1990 to now, no CID board has ever wanted that. Why haven't they wanted it? Because nobody's ever asked for it.
They went through, they followed the rules.
Right.
The rules state how the utility ERCs are established. I've said all along, I don't know how, I find nothing that says how the O and M ERCs are established. But, you know, we're, last meeting, you approved an assessment methodology for O and M. But there's...
And bringing in an expert to tell us how to do it.
Yes, he's going to do a plan and present it to you.
Right. So that's all okay. But it's no one's fault, certainly not yours. But at the end of the day, forgive me for saying this, the hotel people bought the hotel knowing there's ERCs. And on December 1st, if they stroke a check for whoever they are, boom, they bought a hotel. Steve absolutely knew there were 20 ERCs with that parcel. Everybody in this room told him that. He still bought it. So there were no surprises and nobody made him buy it. That's the end of the story.
There was one surprise. We said we would buy that five acres.
Right.
And the next day, it wasn't ours to have.
Right. And that feels strongly, that feels strangely like the emails we got last night. It feels just like it. And that's another story, but these last minute n runs?
Yeah, you don't do business.
No. That's it. That's a strategy. That's all it is. What email did we get last night? I didn't see it.
That was the one where Steve submitted his application.
Yeah. The ERCs.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to move the agenda and I nominate the Vice Chair, Kerry O'Connell, to be the incoming chairman for the next year.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say thank you. After this meeting.
After this meeting, yeah. And then, Mr. Johnson.
I don't know if that happened right away last time.
Yeah, but I don't want to take the fun away from you.
It did. It was that...
Busy agenda.
The vote was called and it was all in and of importance. And you moved the agenda and amended, correct? That's correct. Motion two.
Yes.
Cal, what I would suggest, to bring back the next board meeting, a resolution, also to the extent that we need to change signatures. A reorganization resolution. Correct. Because then we need a vice chair.
Yeah, vice chair. I nominate Sam, what did you say last name?
Let's, no.
O'Connell.
Let's nominate Michelle because Sam was appointed, he wasn't elected.
That's correct.
Oh, so you can't do it?
Well, you can't, but I'm...
But there isn't a...
Oh, I nominate Michelle, I'm sorry, for vice chair.
I'll second it.
So we need a vote on each one.
Congratulations. Not yet. So that would, yeah, I guess that's what you would do.
Yes.
Have an election and you have a recommendation for Michelle and you have a recommendation for Sam.
It was never seconded for me, so...
I seconded.
There's only one, there's only one on the table.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't come out to give time to have a second. I made the nomination.
Right. Okay, so, your nomination failed and Russ has put a motion. Who is seconded? Did I miss it?
I did.
You did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will amend your organizational and, when do you think we should follow it up next? Absolutely, with the formal resolution for the time. Now, we have a good paper trail.
I have one question.
Yes.
Do I have to use my legal name?
Yes.
I have a legal name that's different than Kerry.
I know a lot of people like that. Following, just without, on the other topic, I think it will be very helpful, and again, that's why, reading the hard documents, I think is helpful. I'm going back and looking at 1990 resolution, Resolution 90-3. A Board of Supervisors declaring special assessments, location, nature, and estimated cost, including an allocation, and this is for roads, water, and sewer. It's the water and sewer facilities, it's for roads and drainage facilities. And then there's Exhibit B. Exhibit B is Analysis of Cost by Project. And that's parcels, Roman numeral 1 through 14, describes hotel suites, sunrise K, evenings, dark days, southwest commercial, et cetera, et cetera. Next column, units. Next column, utilities costs, road costs, total cost, total cost per project. And that's in that resolution. And then, attached is a very bad copy of legal notice that has a drawing or sketchup of the property that's subject to all of those. So that's where it started, back in 1990. So I mean, and then you have, in these materials, there's another resolution which talks about the dollars allocated each parcel as a total cost, as a part of the total cost of the project. So you have, that's historic, right? That's from 1990. And then you keep going forward and then in the bankruptcy filing, there's also, as I mentioned before, the affidavits and as to what has been going on all these many years with regards to the allocations. I think that's very helpful for the history.
And back in 1990, what was an assessment? What did it cost?
Well, this was the debt service at the time. This was...
Yeah, it was, an ERC was $10.
Well, no, the, by way of example, the... I, let me try to rotate this. I can't rotate this page.
Because it's all assessed the payoff that day.
Yeah, the original debt. For example, the gave or didn't give a percentage of the total that particular parcel would pay. And it's hard to be silent, I apologize. So I think what would be helpful is for the board members to have all this. Is, you know, the, once you print it out, you're going to have a couple three ring binders, but I think it we're going to keep them here. Sure, I sent that.
Yeah, I got a lot of it.
So, that would be the one that's titled Resolution 1990-3? Yeah, it's attached to a document called Volume One, Part One, and that's from bankruptcy.
Remember reading.
And that's a, that's a very, very long document. It's, yeah, and it even lists various exhibits. The establishing ordinance of a number of resolutions. It's all the way up to a resolution in 1967, 67 exhibits. So I mean, I think that's always helpful to have that, you know? Then we have the affidavits of Cal. We have the deposition testimony, actually, it's from Ron. We have an affidavit from Ron, an affidavit from another friction with the rules. I think all that's helpful to show how that history occurred. Good, bad, or indifferent.
I'd just like to say that I agree with you, Russ. We are responsible to represent all the people of Port of the Islands. So I appreciate that you're doing that. It was just the lack of transparency that I objected to. And when Cal didn't know, that's when, to me, the meeting became secretive. Yes, he told me, just, you know, and I just want to apologize if you felt like I was attacking you in any way or whatever, but I, I just didn't appreciate not knowing. And if you wanted to leave Cal at the meeting, I think that's fine, but it was, in the future, if any of us are going to have a meeting with a lawyer, I think we all should know about it. And, you know, I know we can't be there, but just be aware. If I would have known the reason for the meeting even, I would have felt a lot better for it.
And to be honest, one more thing, it's not up to Steve. Who paid for the meeting? Who paid for our attorney? It's not up to Steve, okay? He asked.
I think that's going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not up to anyone. It's up to us.
And, so, we did have that reference, but I mean, you've got rooms full of paper files.
Right.
Gave to us. Now, we're in the process of digitizing everything. But soon as I had a reference date, and that's what I kept asking Steve for. I said, "What, when, what are you looking for?" I can't, you know, there's 30 years of records. And then when Tony sent that, I had a reference and I was able to dig through the boxes. It took us a couple hours, but we did find that resolution.
Well, you noticed when I asked you for that email I sent you, I told you I like formulas. I like everything to work out. I asked for numbers and valuations and everything like that to figure out the ERCs on all these properties. But that...
I guess, looking at it from a number way is, I know myself, when I'm looking at numbers, I look for certain things. What Tony just said basically told me I would have been looking in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
It was there, but displayed in another way.
Well, the other thing that's in here is CNN went through all the contracts and everything. We were supposed to, one of the other jobs of the property manager, prepare true-up calculations. When's the last true-ups?
Calculations is when...
And invoice property owners for payment. Well, there was a change. Somebody bought the property. Somebody bought the property. So where was the true-up?
That's typically done by, it's in an undeveloped district. And it's usually done when you're looking at changing the product type. I, I didn't have anything to go off of. Steve met with.
When's the last time we had a true-up anywhere here?
Well, we don't do true-ups all the time. It's only when, typically with a bond or a community-wide.
How many bonds have we had? Two, did we have any true-ups? Did we have any true-ups with those bonds?
But that's a request of the developer to change that, and that wasn't done. A true-up is changing, and we've done true-ups before, but it's initiated by the developer who says, I was, I was gonna put on this section so many single-family homes, now I wanna turn them into condos. So that's a true-up, can we do that?
Okay. Well, that's what happens when you're dealing with late people.
Done every year.
I didn't say it would have to be done every year. I'm just asking when we had one done. In thirty years.
I don't know if it's ever been done.
There you go. That's, that's my point.
I see a nineteen ninety-three letter where they adjusted the ERCs.
Yeah, wow.
No, they did, I mean, it's a, that was done by whole lot test to Tom.
And it was probably kind of a true-up this most recent year when that four fifty acres, the ERCs came back into the district.
Oh, yeah, that's a good example.
But that was kind of a true-up at that point.
There hasn't been that many transactions.
No.
The purpose for all this, the purpose for all this, I want to get this squared away. Because if the people that come in to buy this hotel, you know, there's already all kinds of rumors of what they're gonna do. Buying out hotel mini-um, the little ones, and pushing everybody out and tearing everything down and building towers and stuff like that. We better be ready for this, that's my point. That's why I wanna know, have a formula in place for any vacant property. You'll see when we get into the conversation about.
But you have a formula now for utility determination.
Those are fine. The marina, the chairs, the rooms, the houses, those are fine. I'm not talking about those, that's fine, we did all that. I see the formula for that, talking for the stuff we don't have a formula for, which is vacant land, which we gotta get rid of. And we, we want things to be done right now. It's gonna be all new owners. I'm telling you, there's stuff coming, you just, it's gonna come.
The vacant land, when somebody has to develop, I've said this for over a year. When somebody has a plan, they bring it in and it gets analyzed by the engineer and he determines how many they need. It's based on flow to determine, if you only have that much capacity in that one utility system. And.
Okay, all right, well, we're gonna be going over this stuff again later, so let's get a move on.
Yeah, I think it's also helpful is Cal's two thousand and ten assessment report, part of water and sewer bond issue, piece from the history of the ERCs. Until the ERCs.
I'm fine with everything that's established and formulated. That is not an issue. I mean, I know we did the marina, we just did the marina, we just changed, so we, you know. Anyway, okay. I guess we go to audience comments on agenda items. Thought we did it, okay.
You said you moved the approval of the agenda and changing chairs. That was your motion and so the agenda's been approved.
So the audience got any comments on the agenda?
My name is Rick Swope, I own a one sixty-seven days, I wrote a letter to board and management about, I'm starting to sell my five acres. You're absolutely sure, I mean, I'm in trouble to do that, so not glad that I brought your questions on.
Could you come up here, sir?
Yeah, so we can hear you better.
We have to have you recorded. Can you do the hand wipe?
By the table.
Yeah, where?
Where is Mike?
I didn't know. Turn it on and use it, so.
He can just stand right here, just put this over there. Whatever you wanna do, they'll do it.
They eat the link, so no, you're fine there. We'll get it out and record it.
We like to give everybody a hug.
Yeah, so.
But if we're gonna hear you out there, you gotta speak loud.
My name is Rick Swope, I'm at one sixty-seven Ks, I wrote a letter to the board and management and.
And that's in the agenda page.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's addressed sometime.
I'm not sure, I mean, the board's aware of, but your request was to not sell the property and develop a, develop a plan for use of it that benefits the whole community and not necessarily be profit-driven.
Correct.
I felt like we were being forced to sell it and I wasn't convinced of that. I saw a very strong financial balance sheet. I think we, I saw a million dollars in reserves, I show a five hundred thousand dollar profit from operations. I see our bond being paid for and I was just missing the concern or panic, the sell this property right away when I love it the way it is. So my agenda is to keep things nice, right? Lift that up and show it to the.
We have it done for years.
This is it? That's the reason?
Yeah.
The reason is, to me, I look at it like a roof on a condominium. Why do we not have reserves or why should we not now be setting up reserves so that we're prepared for that, you know?
That's a great question.
I mean, I, I don't understand why.
We're losing something like two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand a year. I'm not collecting ERCs on that property.
We had, we've been paying five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand of principal and a hundred thousand, almost five hundred thousand on our bond payments.
But that's for the water plant that's separate.
Yeah.
That's a separate thing.
Yeah.
And we were. Excuse me, I just moved in a year and a half. Cut the audit at report and it looked like a very, very strong. And first of all, congratulations to the board and the accountants for getting a clean opinion and unqualified opinion on your, on your audit. I think that's really cool. But when I don't see any debt, I see a profit. You know, it just, I just didn't see the concern for selling the, selling the property to get a couple million dollars. And if we owe five million, it's not gonna take care of the property anyhow. I think reserves, setting up the appropriate reserves to maintain our assets, I think is the way out on this side.
Oh, it's what?
I just didn't get, yeah.
In a very good financial position. Four years ago, five years ago, they weren't. And so everything was put on hold. As Mister Jensen said, the board had the engineer prepare a revised, updated capital improvement plan.
We just.
And with that debt going away, that part of it was refinancing. They cut a hundred thousand dollars out of their annual debt service, which helped stabilize their, their monthly ongoing financing. But, yeah, they're in great shape. And as Ms. O'Connell suggested, that the board can include with the current financing, sort of a million dollars a year for addressing those things. The boards as a whole, correct if I'm wrong, feels that that's not enough to take care of everything. And the sale of that property will help address those millions of dollars of, of delayed maintenance.
For how long? I mean, eventually, we have to address the problem and.
Well, that's the time. And right now, I think we're discussing, we'll be discussing a generator, two hundred and fifty thousand. So it doesn't take long to drain your reserves, so if we need more reserves.
And it's not just the sale. It's the income that would be generated annually from the sale of that property.
The flow. That's why you said earlier, we are almost at our limit of the capacity now.
No. That's, that's incorrect.
Yeah.
About seventy percent, seventy-five.
No, not even, not even that. During fifteen, we might be sixty.
I thought I could do that a little while ago.
No, it's a seasonal property in season, as far as could pass here, we're about sixty, sixty-five percent. And then out of seasons, we're about twenty-five percent, we're way down now.
Yeah.
I love the community, I love the environment, I love the wildlife, and my goal is to keep it that way if we possibly can. If I can do anything on the financial to help to assess that, I'm more than happy to help if I can.
We appreciate it, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments or questions?
I just.
I mean, it's on the agenda, this is comments on the agenda. You wanna make sure something's brought up or?
I just, I'm misunderstanding, he says five acres?
Yeah, he meant fifty. Yeah, no, he meant the back way. We have no control of the file. Right.
Okay, so let's, onto the next, approval of meeting minutes.
Give me a line item, line number.
I think it's line thirty-four. Wonder how much land, it would state that there is, is a lot. Wonder how much lands, the Clark County and Clark County Al, said there is a lot, not a lot as in a lot, but a lot.
So combine that.
Yes. I think, and then, Frank, you'll enjoy these. Line ninety-nine. So we're talking about the villages, which is not an HOA, it is a COI. Again, and those two, and then. I saw it, that's on forty-three. I think that, that included in that was a three to one reduction in the ERCs as the quote-unquote mannequins were built. That's what we, that's what we voted on and discussed.
What I am.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know whether that needed to be included in that. One forty-three, which is where the motion is.
It was discussed earlier and I didn't catch it at that one, that's part of the motion.
That was, that was.
Part of the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
That we reduce it three to one based on each of the mannequins that's built or built.
Do we need to know that?
Okay, we need to vote on this.
Okay, so after based, the first base, of the ERCs on Steve McNamee's property, based on.
A three to one reduction and the mannequins are built.
Yeah.
A three point.
Three, three to one, each building, three ERCs.
Reduce by, yeah, we reduce it to one, three ERCs are reduced to one.
But wasn't it also said until the rules are accepted, it's changed, we can't.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct. This is just for the minutes, but you're right.
Right.
And seeing the planner also.
Right.
And that should be based on occupancy permits. So that'll decide when they're done. We won't have to decide.
Right.
Okay, so that are correct. It would read readjustment of the ERCs on Steve McNamee's property based on reduction of three ERCs to one ERC.
One completed, yeah.
Wouldn't be one, wouldn't completed. To take out the, it being after development plans submitted to the admiral.
Yeah. When completed with an occupancy permit from the county. That way there's no discussion.
Okay. Okay. So we're gonna, after property comma based, we'll strike the rest of that sentence and insert on, based on reduction of three ERCs to one ERC when completed.
With, with.
With the occupancy permit.
That's completion.
Based on an occupancy permit from the county, but I wanted to write it because it's too easy to forget. We already had an argument on what, what constitutes completed.
Based upon a branded COI.
Yeah.
Right. That way they can decide. Okay.
Eddie?
Yep. The motion, I mean, we were.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we go into landscape maintenance.
Yes.
Robert?
Good morning, everyone. I actually did a couple of proposals that we sent out, multiple, actually, the notes actually talked about, you know.
And those are in your packet, I included the tree trimming.
I'm missing that one, so glad you guys got it.
Yeah.
So it's all basic stuff from the tree trimming that we done. It's not the count of total palm trees that you guys got, what was the green tree in the house, it's seasonal stuff that we do routinely before the mulch. So I'd like to get that done, you know, soon before the end of the year, so we can put down the mulch, so we're not dropping all the debris and breaking out. Mulches that's installed. The guys have an instructor, if you get everything kind of seasonal trimming, there is a nicer need, so when we do put it down, it's, we're not breaking debris after you put it down. So the palm tree trimming is due.
I'm not well.
I actually, I'm missing bits of palm. So I left it on the desk.
That one, that's forty, six fifty-three. That's the palm tree trimming.
Same price as last year, nothing's changed. Count, are still the same, Michelle, I'm not interested in the one, so all different than what it was before.
I have one question on the, the Union Road Center median. I think we're gonna cover that on today's agenda.
That's fine.
And would that impact this?
No.
I mean, you'll still be able to do this.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, no, you're, you're fine. It doesn't, you're, you're okay. It doesn't affect that at all.
When you get down to that home area, you're okay with all four of them being approved?
Yes. There is, just so you guys know, on the landscape side for Union Road, I did, did a recommendation based upon of what we did on Case Drive.
Yeah.
So I know Case Drive was, you know, for years talking about the landscape and the median, this and that. So what I did is kind of mimic what we did over there, carrying it along on this side, so it's all consistent through the property. You did pretty much the same variety of plants without checking everything dramatically. So, you know, there is open for ideas, you know, I've been working with Michelle on that. And I explained to her the concept of what I wanna do. And she was surprised and I did let her know that there is irrigation all the way to Swan. I did that maybe twelve years ago, another ten years, you know, and it stops right at Swan. So the landscape, when you do put in there, will be irrigated. That's why I'm trying to make that clear, that there is irrigation all the way to Swan.
I have one other question, the, something I read somewhere, all my reading, the damage to the median from that accident.
Yeah, yeah, I did put it on the notes. I didn't know if you guys wanted, if they reached out to you guys about that.
Yeah, that was my question. Isn't that the accident person, isn't it their insurance that's okay for that? Or isn't it the state did those plants and we maintain them?
We maintain them, they're yours. Yeah, yours. I, so I read this, I did. But we'll, you know, get with, do you know who the company was? No, it was actually, I think a car came off the trailer and a semi kind of diverted off to the left side.
But I think some of the neighbors had seen it, so hopefully they can identify.
Yeah, I was here right when that happened, but it was all the police and everybody, we had to kind of merge around. And so it was within a couple minutes I got here.
Those are a police report.
I'm sure there has to be, but. I'm sure there has to be, but it did, you know, it was in the median.
Well, luckily, nobody died.
If there's a police report, then we will know who to, who to contact. Only problem is you're dealing with an insurance company and it might be six weeks, seven, eight days before they ever get, they ever pay it for it.
Those are the eastbound side.
Yeah, but if you don't get.
So if we could just go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
I'll try to get to the beat on that. It was just, I just wanted to bring it up. I hadn't heard anything, you know, outside around the show, shoulder of the areas that were, you know. It wasn't a whole lot of damage, but you know, you guys need to report for me to do something, you know, before they happen.
Yeah, what, to repair that, it sounds, what, what are you thinking?
It was just, it was just like plants, some boxes. Like I would say, when they see five hundred bucks, you know, so I just wanted, I didn't want to bring it up.
Oh, it's under five hundred. Yeah, well, not knowing, yeah, because I know it's all.
Let's fix it.
It does fine. I mean, I just wanted to bring it up. I don't know if, you know, just wanted that you guys were aware of it, you know, if there was, or you guys did a report for me, I'll be.
Yeah, it's not worth it.
Perfect. And so that, that estimate is based upon the Case Drive period long on Union Road.
Yeah, it'll look great.
I'm sorry, it was Wednesday, October twenty-seventh. Roughly four fifteen.
Well, thank you for driving that car.
We, the, 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 though, costs are less than the deductible, so.
Yeah. I might as well just fix it.
Yeah.
All right, Robert?
I said one of the things. I just want you to know that in ten years, you did a smoking job on the trees in Orchid Cove, your crew. I mean, they have never been done that well.
Yeah.
You really did. I mean, those guys were like unbelievable. It, it was great.
Oh, I.
Yeah, that's where.
Tremendous job.
So.
You said it was coming later.
Improved, I mean, that was ten years ago, we did it too.
No, I'm gonna, no, it's been done since then.
Yeah, I mean, every year, it was regulated, twenty years regulated, not by me.
Right.
Not approving the extension.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just to make what's there, look at the other side.
The other thing too, was there's a section that the Indian Park.
That's.
Died out, just, just never did well. And I added that on forty-one media, pretty much the same side of where the, uh, on the east, as you're going to west, I'm sorry, the west side. That section where the, uh, there's a culvert that kind of washed out and there's milk plants, just a couple of ditchlands. That, the thousand forty-four dollars is for that portion of forty-one.
So that is estimate of sixty-four, forty-six, sixty-four.
Yes.
So I did it, I did add that to that, and the other one is.
Six sixty?
Yeah, and then there's other portions before the bridge on the left side, that's as well, just nothing there. Um, I don't recommend any plants to be installed where the truck went in that area. That area is standard with water all summer. I shouldn't say, you know, there's just so much water there. Put something there to survive, it has to be something that's pretty much big.
Aquatic.
Why don't we put it aquatic?
Yeah, and so I don't want to do so. I'd rather just saw that area, you know, just bring inside and just let it be, keep it clean, keep, get rid of that bed. Um, because when it rains in the summer, it does pull there and it takes weeks and weeks for it to kind of stop straight.
What about, that is on a curve, and what about night driving? Should there be something there to, to keep a vehicle from going on the other side of the road if they don't make that turn?
Um, I don't, I mean.
That would be my only concern.
That would be more of a DOT issue.
That's true.
DOT would need to, this is our own.
Yeah, so for whatever you guys want to approve, those are recommendations. You know, I know it was just brought up from the last meeting for me that I was gonna provide you guys with, you know, here, here we are. So I know it's, um, multiple, you know, I don't know if you have a company after the fact, or whatever you guys want.
Bring this up now?
Yeah.
Well, three. I'll, I'll move that we.
That's great.
Forty-six, sixty.
The fourth one is an agenda.
That's right. I'll move we approve forty-six, sixty-three, estimate forty-six, sixty-two, forty-six, sixty-four, and forty-six, sixty-five.
I'll second.
You all in favor?
I.
Yeah, but then.
Um, that's it for me, guys, and.
Thanks.
Hang on, just be here for this discussion on the Union Road. And at the last meeting, this is a request from Orchid Cove, and then you didn't say no, you said, uh, did a proposal and Michelle was asked to get with Robert, and she did. This is the proposal of what they're suggesting.
And this is the one that matches Case Drive.
Yeah, pretty much what I, what we did on, on Case Drive, carrying it over to Union, and like I said, there's always one where I grew it.
Is this gonna be all the way up to the entrance of Orchid Cove? Yeah.
Yeah, but it's gonna be split, so it's not solid. So it's, it's somehow, you know, kind of giving it some definition as you drive in and curb appeal. Um, there is stuff where I can walk, you know, for, because it is turning area, so we have to be, what we're for this, the plants and stuff like that.
So Cal, let's just rinse it. I mean, she's fine with it. It's the same thing. We don't, let's, let's roll it.
No.
But we don't want to keep it tied up.
I make a motion to approve.
I don't care about this.
A Union Road.
I do.
Forty-six, fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight, seventy-six.
Yeah, I, I, no. Forty-six, fifty-seven.
Forty-six, fifty-seven.
Right. Forty-six, fifty-seven. I make a, I make a motion to approve.
And this is, wait, 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 this is just up, this is just up to the, um, entrance to, yeah, to Orchid Cove. Okay, the only question I have is if we're selling the property in the back, or if we're not selling the property in the back, is that road gonna change? And then all that, we're putting fifty-six hundred into.
We, we talked about that before, that it, even if we do, by the time, you know, we're talking three years down the road, and that road needs to be enhanced.
Yeah, we can't talk about things that could happen in the future. Let's do what's here and there.
Yeah, I think that was, you're gonna change that road. Uh, the plans are, once it gets down to where the old North Hotel, and then goes right, and then you are going to the agreement with the gun club, I think it was, or Bruce Alachek was, then to go across that property and extend it out.
Yeah, what, what I'm thinking, on the line of what Russ is saying, there was discussion that Orchid Cove didn't want that road being used. They wanted another road put in.
Yeah, that's. That was just a dream. They wanted to put it in along the po, the property line.
Well, they, I don't.
It was environmentally sensitive.
I second that emotion, that much.
That emotion.
Oh, my God. Yeah. The Motown member.
Motown member of the board. Well, he wasn't old enough to remember, but.
I know.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, definitely everything you had. See, you looked at this report, right?
Yes.
Okay, and one of your, you've got some of your guys moved down some of the canna, uh, either with the mower or. Is that'll come back?
It'll come back, but yeah. Are sensitive to those.
That's pretty easy there.
Yeah. Well, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, utility operations.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Our water usage is going up a little. You can see the water plant, uh, we use four point eight, produce four point eight million gallons of water. We treated four million gallons of wastewater, and we sent out for irrigation sixteen-three million gallons of water. Wow, so it's going up. This will begin.
Yeah.
Mitch, why do you think irrigation, I asked you last month too, and he gave me the answer, but why do you think irrigation's going up so much beginning of rainy season? I mean, it went up two million gallons. End of race, but I mean, it went up two million gallons in a month.
Before, no, no rain, so before.
That's what it is.
It was like two, two and a half weeks, three weeks with no rain.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad the yards are great, and I was just wondering about the consumption.
Yeah, yeah, it goes up every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, uh, working with David on the, on the information for the fire pump station panel and the generator, so that that can be sent, put out for bid. The price bill stands as of right now for the control panel upgrades, if you decide to do those. Those prices change pretty quick right now, and there's a long lead time on everything that works, but we're fine the way we are. Operations, the wastewater plant, it met all requirements perfectly. It's, it's running really well. The water plant and distribution met all the requirements except for the E. coli positive, which I hate that happened, but we've never had a bad sample. The water's always been great. And believe it or not, if you're gonna have an E. coli positive sample, it's actually better to have it on distribution for whatever reason. You don't have to send out all those notices, but because it happened on the well, we had to send out all those notices, which everyone received at their house. We took ten samples that, the same day, I took ten and then I took ten more. I sent it to two separate labs because I was in belief that it could be lab error. All twenty samples came back negative, so we were good. And then we pulled two samples a day, six hours apart, for five consecutive days. They all came back good, so. And then at the same time, we took the, the water samples that we got the E. coli positive result. We also took them in distribution and they all come back great, so at no time was the community ever in jeopardy of having contaminated water. But then, then there's fluorination after it.
Right.
Yeah, for that, so.
Absolutely.
Plus the filtration.
Yes, and those, and that E. coli sample, that actually was taken, taken in the well field. We take those in the well field at the wellhead before any treatment or any fluorination or any process at all.
And there's nothing out there, I mean, there's nothing out there that could have done it.
Really? I wouldn't think so, except for those are shallow wells.
Yeah.
And the water table, you know, the sheet flow out there is still high right now. Which I noticed the roadway out there, remember we talked about the culvert before?
Yeah.
I fixed it last time. I know Parks and Recreation, we're looking at doing something different, but it's starting to wash out again.
Now, don't hold your breath on them. I think we gotta fix it.
I'll just give them another load of gravel and we'll bring it in and don't.
Can I ask you a question? I'm glad you said that. Have you, with the project up north of us now, like six, seven years old, and the objective is for the sheet flow to really increase, have you noticed an increase in the sheet flow on the prairie?
Absolutely.
You have?
I personally have.
Yeah, because it's between us and Jane Seenick Road.
I see some people that ride their bicycles and stuff out there, and I'm sure that anybody that's been out there will see that the water is, is higher now. Also, which we just put a call in, and it's happened a couple of times over the last year. The electrical poles that hold the power going back to the wells, I don't know if it's because of all the saturation, but they're underwater. They are leaning.
We've had that talk.
They'll come out and fix it.
Yeah.
But it continues to keep happening. And one thing that I worry about, which I think I've expressed before, is if we ever have a break in that line coming from those wells to the plant, I don't know that we'll be able to fix it because they're gonna be underwater to the point, I don't know that we can do water fast enough.
You're not gonna be able to get to it. With Irma, we get twenty inches of rain in two days, it was on a full moon. Unheard of amount, and if the sheet flow's coming up, which it's intended to do.
Right.
I could see the sheet flow going over the road.
It's really close.
At certain times of year. That's the idea.
And, and I don't know, David, I know in the capital improvements, that part of that is replacing that line.
Right.
Is it possible to do that on some sort of elevated structure along the road? That way.
Wouldn't. Oh. And even raising the road is a possibility too.
Okay.
We'd have to go through some permitting and so forth, maybe with the environmentalists and so forth. When we elevate the pipe, we have to, again, it's a balancing act because the wildlife may want to cross over, or maybe to think about that a little bit, so it's just not a matter of just putting the pipe up on the ground and only good.
I mean, it's okay now. It's a, a what if, and it may never be if it does.
Tommy, you might put on your radar, uh, because that is state land. We've got an easement. But, you know, to get permission to build the road up and, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure South Florida would make us knock on that door also.
Yes.
Because part of it would be probably modify the existing South Florida Water Management District permit. If we, please, Dave, is fact change.
I'm not sure there is a permit out there, but yeah, the land, since we do have an easement over it.
Yeah.
We don't own it, we'll have to, yeah, fight those battles.
Have those conversations.
Yeah, those conversations.
I think we should think about it, you know? I really do.
Sure.
Now, that's.
The sheet flow is good news for Orchid Cove and POI, but you have to adjust to it. I mean, down the key, they're, they're lifting houses now. And that's kind of, this has nothing to do with climate at all. This has to do with the, the project up north of us, and its whole emphasis is sheet flow, bringing back the sheet flow. And it's working. So if you add on top of that hurricane event or something. Back.
I worry especially where that washout is.
It's gonna be.
Somewhere. I've never seen it. It's there, but I worry about it.
That distribution, like the.
Yeah.
Yeah, bringing it from the wells to.
That's in your CIP for its replacement.
Yeah, but where is it on the CIP?
I think we moved it down and we had it up, uh, near the top at first, but it's, it moved out a little bit.
It's at the million dollar one?
I think so, yeah.
But just to fix the washout, is there anything better than just gravel you could use to fix the washout?
So it has some big culvert pipes in there.
Yeah.
And the water flows through them, but now it's getting higher than the culvert.
Yeah, they can't handle it.
In the gravel out.
Yeah.
So we just put the gravel in there and compacted. It lasted eight or nine months.
Yeah, but is there a regular breach there in that one spot?
I mean, it happened eight or nine months ago and now.
So there's a regular breach there.
It, it did happen.
Yeah.
And I just worry that, that, that well line has to be underneath those culvert.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Would a head wall work?
Yeah, maybe that would be a little head wall there.
Yeah.
Just, just to force it to go through those culvert pipes.
Maybe we'll get together and take a look at that.
Yeah, through a head wall, it'll divert it and it'll stop that.
Or at least not let it wash out the.
Right, right, prohibited, yeah.
Because that's a weak point between the pipes.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. The reuse system back at the plant, it's working fine. We're still manually filling the tanks. I'm waiting on, waiting on the PLC. VCI is the only option. There's no one else. They're telling me they still can't get the parts, so. Um, but they assure me as soon as they get their, get the parts, they'll be here to fix it, and until then, we're monitoring it, filling it mentally, it is fine. It's just a copy of the numbers there again on the, the water consumption. Preventive maintenance, we, we inspect all the lift stations weekly, first thing Monday, and then again on Friday. They're all working fine. Blowers are fine. They've been greased and oiled. No odor complaints. The plant generators, the inspection was done from coming southeastern and the checkup on it for the fourth quarter. The, oh, still waiting on the parts here, just a repeat of what I just told you. The scene and sewer cleanouts over on Stellamar South, those have been repaired.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The security cameras, that's all been taken care of. They ordered everything and got us on the schedule. Hopefully by the next meeting, we'll be done with that. And I'll have you, all the information there.
What about the three lights in the back?
Our ballast for the three lights, and there's one up in the front. So hopefully I'll have those put in for you too, as well by the next meeting.
Question, Mitch?
Yes.
All right, so I get into this for one of our, uh, people in my neighborhood, auto flushers. What? They keep thinking that it's not being flushed out of there at the end.
It don't need to be right now. We're, we're turning them down, so when everyone's here using a lot of water, we don't need to use the auto flushers, and the only thing the auto flusher does, whether it runs automatic or manual, it is just to maintain that there's a chlorine residual at the end of the line. So you, you'll see Barry, he's out and about. He checks chlorine daily all throughout the community. So if he sees a low chlorine residual, then he'll adjust the chlorine or the auto flush or manually flush it. So, and there are some that are not being used.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Yes, sir. The backflow preventer can't prevent. The backflow preventer can't prevent the handles. When this was done, it was at seventy-five percent, but I think my guy only has two streets left. I think we've got them all changed out now. The storm drains and there's some little cleanouts we're gonna clean. I believe the guys are gonna be here on Tuesday to do those. The water meters, the bigger ones are the only ones that are left. We got a partial shipment of those. My guys are here working on those right now. And if they come in, we'll get those knocked out. I hope to have everything complete by the end of the year.
Mitchell, do you think that the hotel is, this one, is one large meter?
It's got like six large meters.
Does it? Will those be in by December first?
No, sir. No, probably not. So I received some of the one inch. Tell me the rest of the one inch should be the two and three and four inch, which is why it's over there. He's telling me I'll have it by the end of the year, but the way things been going, nothing seems to come very fast.
All right, so I think that's gonna be important.
As soon as we get them though, I'll get them in. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question for you. And I'm not disputing dollar amounts or anything here, but your invoices? I don't like them. The, I never really looked at them before. Parts and labors altogether, you get like for these backflow preventers, you get seven at a rate of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Well, I'm not, like I said, I'm not disputing the prices, okay? And then in other places here, you have labor, ten times one eighty-five, but you're like, he gives us an invoice, it's all broken down. You know what I mean? So I mean, I would think that parts would be something, you'd have two categories here. You'd have parts and you'd have a labor rate. And I needed, and I would see the parts that you put in. I mean, I need more descriptions.
Unless you've got them someplace else, unless you give Calvin all these. So, I mean, some of it's monthly charges, I get that.
So that, that is a set price according to our contract. So that's times seven cuz we did seven, so it breaks it down.
All right.
And then monthly operations, that's what we already know. And then.
So I didn't, I didn't see that in the contract.
That one, water main break.
Lines, again, yeah. That's a job.
That's a job.
But it still would be interesting to see the parts versus the labor.
And then labor excavator and operator to dig up. It's ten hours at one eighty-five according to our contract. Yep, and then that's the same as that when it serves. So, and then here you can see are all the parts for the water main. The four inch C nine hundred water main.
That's what made me ask for this, cuz I didn't.
Yeah, that's all labor. Those two are, yep, two days of labor and that's the parts for the water main.
But because the other one said parts and labor, and I didn't know this was, I didn't know this was a fixed rate.
That is a fixed rate, yes, sir.
And I tried to break it down.
They're in your emails, yes, every single month. Yeah, check it out.
How about A D K? Yes. Plus it should have been in that email that you sent to me. Okay, you don't know when. Oh, good, okay. I got you. He sent the context to everybody.
Did you send the contracts, everybody? I can get them.
Oh, uh, he might, he might have sent it through the P O I.
Yeah, I checked both though. You can get them.
I didn't get them the other one.
I don't think so. No. It's the only one.
We'll just forward that, uh, word and set up.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, but anyone can break them down. You know, I, I like to divide.
Anything else?
Good job, man. Toilet flusher, doing a good job.
Okay, now what I buried my agenda here. Engineering reports.
It's been a busy month. I'll think just in the art of the list, as far as new home construction, there's about sixteen homes that we've got underneath construction at one stage or another. And we, we put it into a spreadsheet just to keep track of them. It's just so busy out there. And, uh, again, we're just monitoring it. There's a couple of ones that, that kind of pulled us to the topic and we wanna go ahead and talk about a little bit. I had a meeting out in the field this morning at one ninety-nine K Drive. We've got a little special situation there. We, we've got, like so many of the easements, half the drainage easements on the case are actually in the water. And in this case, we've got one that's pretty much in the water. The homeowner's approach is so about doing some special things where the swell would tip, where, where we would need to have to replace the swell. He would like to put a ramp in there. He's got some issues as far as accessibility. So instead of just a, of an elevated bridge, he'd like to go ahead and put something a little more substantial in there as far as a solid ramp with a, with a piece of culvert pipe to let the flow go through there. And.
Is that the one on K's Drive and Sunset?
Yes, right in the corner there. And, uh, we've talked to him and we've also asked whether we might be able to get an additional ten foot easement land board to supplement twenty that's in the water already. And he's, he's somewhat agreeable to that. We need to, you know, make pile arrangements and so forth. But what we wanna do today was get a conceptual approval from the board to go ahead and proceed with that. I'll need to talk with Tony as far as the easements and so forth and the agreements that we would develop as far as updating this additional ten foot easement for drainage.
Yeah, I guess two things for it. The board is in the mindset to approve the ramp, the district's drainage easement. We have a form what's called a non-distributing encroachment agreement or simpler documents to allow it to be recorded. And as far as any easement, we'd also have to have a joint or a mortgage holder to easement.
What about the problem there between the two homes that are being built? Because one owner is telling the owner it's your fault, not the seawall, but their rip rack, it caves in. One says, no, it's your fault. And I noticed the, the one on Sunset K has the bigger piece of property. It's pie shape. And the one on the left, K's Drive, has put, uh, tubes down under his land that emptied on the other guy's lot for drainage off his house.
Actually ends in the easement, I think.
Yeah, but if you look. There is one swell. They put this.
Sunset's a little unusual in, in that the culvert from the road drainage is piped back to the swell. And, and those two locations, they put a star map all that swell and there's a pipe that extends both directions to interconnect the swell along the, the canal itself. That, that has been opened up on both ends now and it will allow the water to go back and forth.
But does that stop the water from coming between the homes towards the water?
Well, the, the drainage on the lots themselves, half the drainage from about midpoint of the lot to the water should drain towards the water, the canal itself. The other half should drain out towards the road. In some cases, most of the drainage does go back to the back swell instead, which is fine, especially that's where it winds up.
But if you look, it's, it's like almost level. There is no swell there anymore.
A lot of the swells in the back of all the.
No, the side between the two homes.
Oh, okay, yeah, there, a lot of those have filled in over time again.
No, this is two houses being built.
No, okay. Yeah, the swell, the swell, sir, there is a high point at one point and we were talking about that this morning with Mr. Reed.
Have you seen it since they put the, they finally filled in that whole big pile of dirt that they pushed in and they put the grass, the sod down now?
Right.
It looks very level to me.
Yeah, there, there is a little bit of a slope going back. There is, there is one high spot in the side that needs to be probably addressed. But for the most part, it does straight back towards the back lot. So it's looking better. In fact, that, that one lot that we were talking about, they're actually doing the concrete work today on the sidewalk while they get that in.
There's a lot of work going on.
But I guess, I guess if we get a conceptual approval on the one of one ninety-nine K, that would be great. Then I, then I need to address another issue about the drainage on Sunset.
Let me ask you, if we, if we do approve that, they're gonna put a culvert in the back swell, correct?
Right.
Who's responsible for keeping that culvert clear?
The, the drainage responsibility, the maintenance and so forth, it's really the districts. Hopefully the homeowner will take upon itself to keep the miscellaneous debris out of it. Very similar to what we've got right now on Sunset, we've got culvert, where, where it's piped back from the road back. That's really the district's responsibility to take care of that. But we've got the maintenance responsibilities for that swell in the back.
Except in the swell along the, uh, in the rear. That's an open system.
For the most part, it's open.
That's where they want to put the culvert.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we got. One ninety-nine is requesting a culvert and then for, I'm not sure how long it's existed, but there's also a piece of piped, a piece of, the swell that has been piped at the midpoint drainage on Sunset.
Yeah, T's comes down in T zones.
Yeah, so we do have a few exceptions on.
But it's to the landowners benefit to keep the, their pipe cleaned out. Otherwise, they're gonna have.
Yeah, we're gonna do a fifteen inch pipe because that matches up with what's immediately adjacent to it. So that's what we'll be looking at.
I, I'm just trying to get this together because this is the same hole that wanted the fencing all the way down to their dock. And it was gonna go in the swell. And now they, they want this to happen. What is wrong with what everybody else has, the walkway?
Accessibility. Right, right now, there's some health issue. Excuse, Mr. Reed's back there. I hope I don't miss, say anything, but he, he's looking at the need to use a wheelchair to access the stock in the future.
Well, my husband uses a wheelchair and we have a rent.
Yeah, in, in well park too, you know, to access back and forth, the heavier loads. It, it's kind of a special exception, but again, the benefit to the board is we're gonna be able to gain a ten foot drainage easement in the back where we don't really have any ability to have drainage back there now.
Well, plus the other property has a culvert, two properties, they had same culvert and then across the street. They should have the same thing on your side.
So it's a little bit unique situation we've got today. That's why we're bringing it to the board.
And, and what's, Tony was talking about paperwork or stuff that has to be done. What's the best way to expedite that? Because I, I don't know if it's gonna hold up their C O or if we don't get it done.
Yeah, I have what I call, I'll call a typical template for the non-distributing encroachment agreement. And what that does, that allows the, we describe the improvements. There's a sketch of improvements, shows where the improvements are on the site line. And it says that they can, they, the property can construct them, but if they're ever in the way, we can tell the property to get it out of the district for maintenance, reconstruction, repair. And if they don't, we can remove it and hold us harmless.
Okay, so he's gotta write that up or do you?
Well, I can, I can give it to him and say.
It's a template. I can do the sketch.
Yep, and it's, and again, it's sort of a fill in the blank. I've tried to make it like that and.
Then we work together to prepare that easement.
Yeah, then the recording cost that's associated with it, it's over seventy dollars. So some, some boards have the property to pay for that. Others say no. And in this case, if we're getting an easement back, perhaps the trade off is district-based preparation. They squeeze my P's and the corner. That's trade off pretty good.
Okay, so.
It's something we could turn into a win-win for everybody out there.
So you can make it happen pretty quick.
Yes, uh, next week if, I don't think.
It's a short week, but yeah, next week, yeah.
No meetings next week, just last week.
Meeting around the table.
Okay, so you can wait with them again and.
Yeah, so I think if you're born from an action on the perspective, I think the board's gonna take the action and open up to the floor of the public for any comments on that. I think the appropriate action would be to authorize staff to repair it. Non-distributing encroachment agreement in exchange for a drainage easement and to have the property not pay any cost because consideration is getting a drainage.
Does the audience have any comment on this for and understanding it? Anything?
Okay, so I think we'd like to have a motion.
I want to motion what he just said.
To say so moved.
I second that.
All in favor? So we'll take care of that.
Also on Sunset, we.
One ninety-nine K's Drive, is that?
Thank you. Also on Sunset, we've got another little issue that I just discovered after the big ramp we had a few weeks ago. Uh, I was looking at the drainage wave, drainage provisions that we've got on Sunset K. I'm gonna call it the mid-block drainage. Somewhere along the line, that drainage got put in and it doesn't appear that it is in the easement. The easement is actually one lot further to the west. And it happens on both sides of the street. Well, that shows it in one location. The engineering class from way back went and showed where it is installed.
Page forty-one of the active, it's a man there that might.
I don't believe.
Forty-two probably, or god, sorry, that's the wrong one. Page forty-one has the. I, I, I don't know which one you're talking about.
Yeah.
No, that's not the red.
Okay, the, the, the easements themselves are on lots eighty, eighty-eight, eighty-nine and seventy-seven, seventy-six. But the pipe is actually built between seventy-five and seventy-six and ninety and eighty-nine.
I'm trying to decipher this because that's.
It's on the sketch here. Look at forty-one.
Yeah, but he's one lot number, so.
Forty-one, uh, he's dropped the first digit off.
Yeah. Oh, and I think what's happened is the handwritten numbers are the addresses. Yeah, the handwritten numbers are the addresses. Without the addresses, so.
The seventy-sixth. So the one I'm looking at on forty-one basically is Venus K.
Venus K, right, has the red around it.
Went over.
Okay.
Yeah, so somehow, some way, the, the, as far as I know, and I haven't done any title work or anything else, it maybe something got changed. I, I just don't have any records that we're in the proper place for our drainage.
Yeah, but I guess you have red marks on all the streets except Sunset K.
That's what the, that's part of that report I did on the, on that rainfall that we had. And this, this exhibit was more meant to show you where that midpoint, mid-block drainage is.
And that started, uh, his report starts on page twenty-six of the exhibit.
I'm, I'm talking about another issue right now. With, yeah, the, the, the drainage pipes themselves should have been built where those easements are shown, but they wound up being one block to the east or one, one lot.
Oh, yeah, you're right, on my block.
Yeah, so they just run off and I don't know. Probably happened thirty years ago.
No. No, it's happened since I've been there. Even the back swells were done since I've been there. I've been there twenty years. But the, uh, the easement, uh, next door to me, it's like between their lot and the lot next door, but they own both lots. Yeah, so, uh, I think they don't have any problem with it being there because it helps the flow off their house.
Right, and my suggestion is if, if we do have an issue there, it's to just approach the existing property owners at those, where we do have the pipe installed already and just see if we can go ahead and get another, get an easement from them to correct the situation and make it legal.
Yeah. On the other side, that's, uh, yeah, that one too, it's by the mid-block, yeah.
And what we may need to do with those two, in, in the case of those slots is normally the, where we do have the mid-block drainage, we have a ten foot easement on both sides of the property line. We may just go and ask them for a six foot easement and match up with the existing utility easement that's already there. And that way they're not gonna be giving up any of the property.
So is that on every block?
No, it's just one location that that happened for some reason.
In fact, if we do this, we go back to one ninety-nine K's Drive for just a second.
Sure. So, so that's something the board would like to pursue. I'll work with Tony as far as getting that corrected. Again, it's existed out there since when those improvements were originally made.
Yeah, it's, a lot of it happened when that house was being built.
Back to one ninety-nine.
Sure, I think for the issue, I think on one ninety-nine K's was the fence, they wanted to put a fence in the back, I think it was that issue before, down the side.
Yeah.
And I'm just pulling a permit tape, applied for the fence permit. And then they tried to cancel it and this county staff said cancellation denied because they need to have a fence around the pool. So I'm not sure if there's still an intent.
I think it's only supposed to go around the pool. It can't go over the swell.
It's a period of feet, Mike, this is.
Well, the one ninety-nine, I think you've applied now for a, for a cage.
Okay.
Yeah, the fence is there.
Okay, thank you. Only because the county denied the request to cancel the permit applications and you have to have some fence, but they're having the pool structure that's here. Thank you, it's a fund.
Yeah, we're, we're in there. Speaking of fences, we are in discussion with another builder who's looking, who wants to put a fence on their property line and we told him no go. So we're just monitoring. So we're just monitoring that too to make sure it doesn't happen.
Let me ask you this, I read something, I guess on the covenants, that when you, let's say, put a hedge between the properties, it's only supposed to be four or six feet high?
No, I think fences are six feet, I'm not sure about hedges.
Yeah.
No, you say covenants.
Oh, covenants, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what everybody was going by and everybody would receive it when they purchased their land.
Do you have a set of those covenants you could show me?
Yeah, I gave them a copy.
Yeah, I have a copy, but typically the district doesn't get involved in that portion of private covenants.
Oh, alright. Inspired now.
Yeah, there's no H O A or anything.
Right, even if they weren't effective, it's a contract between the property owners without the district being involved. Okay, good.
Did you need a motion on that to allow you to, to do that?
For the, for the, just for the easements? Yeah, probably would be good if we had.
I think so.
So moved.
I thought we did.
We already did that.
Oh, now you're doing the six foot one, between the.
With the properties to correct that.
So I second that motion. To talk to the owner, work on the easement.
All in favor?
I.
Alright, good. That's pretty much the house issues, we're, again, we're, we're monitoring them, we're trying to say after the builders the best we can.
Yeah, but I, this thing, see this thing, that cost me a flat tire. And it didn't make me happy at all. But the thing is, I feel, I don't care about the builder, we are responsible for the grounds. I see bikes go down the street in a culvert which is full of sand, I see them slide. I walk two dogs in the morning, I hate to go down that way, it's such a mess. I get sand on everything, it's just all over the place. And this has been going on for months. And it's, you know, the sidewalks, okay, they mark them off, we don't use them, but then we have to use the street. And then you got this mess down the whole street. So where, where is our responsibility? I mean, the builder says yes and doesn't do it, or they say no and doesn't do it, but it has to be done. Who's gonna be liable if someone gets hurt?
What I would suggest is, the county's been pretty good about coming up to job sites because there's a county, like a local county code, building code, say you have to keep everything within the confines of the site. And they don't like having golly gutters with silt in it. So I think.
Maybe more code enforcement.
What I'm saying, you know, you know, hold the code enforcement and ask them to come out.
Why don't we just have Chris, who's your guy that comes out and does stuff, right? He cleans them up and builds the, the builder.
The build, the build.
If you tell the builder.
Yeah, we're out of it.
Either you, you, you clean this up or we're gonna send somebody out to do it. And then we'll put that in and if you don't pay us, then there's a mechanical lien that's gonna get put on you.
What I would suggest, yeah, is you can make complaints online, it's actually better than that. Mike Lucero, who's head of code enforcement, incredibly responsive guy.
I know a lot of people don't like to do it because you have to leave their name. But I.
Oh, you, and then you take photos, you can upload the photos.
Yeah.
Or email them later on. And Mike, you know, his crew, he's pretty responsive. If you have any issues, give me a holler, Terry. But Mike is generally very, very responsive.
Question I would say with these contractors. You just warn them.
This was too.
Or, you know, we can just tell them that if they don't, we'll turn it over to code enforcement.
We, we do have a couple contractors who are very cooperative, we've got a few that are.
Well, this one is not cooperative.
Yes.
And we've already warned them, it doesn't happen.
I agree with her, I think we should just turn them over.
Yeah.
They're not gonna listen.
And they, that's what gets me.
I think you're right, let's turn them over to code enforcement. The hell with it.
Yeah, and that's something I can do if you like.
No, I'll do it.
No, I think we should do it. You know, I mean, if the shoe is on the other foot.
Sure, and Terry, if we're gonna start a policy or, you know, direction from the board. Why don't we, as opposed to each board member having to turn them in? Or each complaint, they can just talk to us and we'll turn them in.
Yeah.
Yes.
But a little bit about us, whether it's myself, Chris, or Cal.
Yeah, it's almost on every block, but there's so much on my block.
Okay, but wait, so we would email you?
Sure.
And then you would come out or you would do it?
Well, he's been coming out, he checks.
I realize that, but every time we call him, it's last month.
What I would suggest is, if you take photos, send them to Dave and or Cal, and then Dave or Cal could pile it and upload the photos or email.
He can send them to Jay.
Checks it too, you know, so, but Chris is only out here once a month.
Right.
Any board member can tell us that there's a problem or any residents, just, you know, let us know and we'll send a letter. And especially if they'll, if you send us a picture of it.
Yeah, and it's often, being able to do it online, it doesn't take that much effort.
Because when people ask me, I say, which is fun.
Yeah, yeah. Especially if you're doing two or three at one time. It's like looking up the building permit information on some of these houses under construction, it's pretty easy once you've done it once.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
No.
Okay, so we're doing.
Yeah, just contact us if there's a concern out there.
Good.
When we had that big rain the other day, I, I came out here and took a look at the rains, I did a little, little report on it. And for the most part, of course, we had finding where we get expected, you know, we're at the outfalls. To the swells, so outside the roads where we've got the pipe, little pipes that go underneath the sidewalk. A lot of those were clogged, caused some problems. Also at the end of the cul-de-sacs, we had some issues there. Newport Drive, it filled up with a lot of water like typical. Again, it just, it just shows the need that we, we have to go back and reestablish some of those swells. And those were identified in the capital improvement plan. That we need to get in, get in there and do some work with those swells. I was kind of hoping maybe we could defer some of the work on the K's area until most of this new home construction's done. Because we're really trying to be more proactive to get the, the new homes built to the proper swell depths and so forth. And that way we won't have to address those with the rehab work, so we're kind of hanging back on that. But.
This is a lead in into another agenda, which is the statutory requirements for stormwater management. Dave's got to prepare a plan.
Yeah.
That we submit to the county. And then every five years, it's gotta be updated. Yes, I, they also have to do ones for wastewater. But this is the first step, this is a, a good start. You developing your plan.
Well, actually, we, we got a start and we finished up this past, I think we were this past fall and summer, there's a capital improvement plan. Because there, what we did, we inventoryed all the drainage, we got an inventory also on the wastewater system. And that's all gonna be a part of it, we actually do have to do a report on the wastewater system too, to turn it to the county that goes to the state. So we're, we're ahead of the game on that June report, I've been monitoring it a little bit. They do have finally posted a template that we can actually use for the stormwater segment of it. They're developing a template again for the wastewater side of it and whenever it becomes available, we'll start. Filling that in and getting those reports ready to go, but again, we got a little bit of time, it's not until June.
Dave, can you send me that template?
Sure.
Thanks.
I, I can send it.
Right off the. Yeah. Yeah.
Too many acronyms.
Yeah.
We have a lot of bonding.
Well, we decided to delay.
Something we'd like to do with the drainage out there of the mid-block areas, is take a look for, look at how we might be able to improve that situation. We all have those little pipes running into sidewalk that we can get rid of that water a little more positively down those swells.
Always block up.
They're problematic, they're problematic, when you got a four inch pipe, they're gonna block quickly. So we, we wanna take a look at that and come up with an idea that maybe we can go ahead and replace those. There's actually gonna be six locations that need to be fixed, so it's not, won't be a big dollar item when it does happen.
We couldn't tally them all in the sidewalk?
That's a possibility.
Where is that in the capital improvement like list, like are we, is it a tie?
As far as like the complete redigging of those swells. Where do we put it, Ray?
I mean, so it sounds like we need to.
Is it maintenance or a capital improvement?
At this point, it's capital improvement because a lot of those swells have had an accumulation over twenty years, a sediment building. So if you're a capital project versus a simple maintenance.
Probably, your auditors are probably gonna classify it. But it's of a dollar amount that would qualify as. And it'll seize five year lifetime.
So it'd be cap.
We'll probably still have to hold it as.
This is it.
Wouldn't you see it that way?
Well, that's part of it, he said Newport side too.
Well, I said Newport Drive, we was looking maybe about one to five years to get in that range, so. Something with Morningstar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it kind of the way it's listed, we, we probably should attack Newport and Morningstar first and then jump over to the K's.
But the, I, the K's are the ones under construction, right?
Right, and that's why we should wait on them.
Yeah, I think maybe those should get moved up when the buildings are done, because they've had the most.
It's never gonna happen.
Wait, why, if, if it's new, if it's new construction, we shouldn't have to touch those, they should be done right.
Correct, the new construction ones, we won't need to touch, but the ones that have been sitting there for twenty years, we're gonna have to go in and I'm sure do some media work.
So Newport Drive and the Morningstar are the two that you're saying we should do?
Probably, they're built and, and they could be done now.
Yeah.
To get that done sooner than later, because especially on Newport near the south end, there is standing water all the time there during the rainy season. I'm not sure why, it just doesn't seem to want to get out of there. Part of it, part of it is because of the highs and lows in the ditches, plus some of the culverts have been filled in over the years.
The, the area where my temporary neighbor has asked about, that you guys went looked at, down at the curve, right after the curve onto Wilderness. That area right there, I don't know which road that really is, but is the builder responsible for that or us to repair that? Right where, right where Wilderness starts, there's a big house on the right just being built.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's happening there?
Remember I, I sent you an email to get a look at it?
Yeah, some of the fail, the, the mid-block swells.
Yeah.
Those over time have filled in naturally, what's being built down there is probably not helping it, it's accelerating.
That's what I was getting.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and really, we need to, we'll, we'll be after those, especially the wind builder to go ahead and reestablish or the property owner reestablish the drainage swell between the properties.
Ah, okay, so that's who does.
Yeah, they might wanna authorize David to have the state's elevation states put in that swell. Contractors will know what they're supposed to do and like Russ says, let's get them done. And while the developers still.
Right, while they're still here.
Yeah.
And, yeah, before they put in all the dirt and everything else.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna argue with you, who's responsible it is.
Yeah, what we've been doing right, for right now is, most of the sites have certified surveys done as they progress through their construction. So we know what the finished floor is on those, we know what the finished, what the finished swell grade's supposed to be. So we can give them a vertical difference as far as that goes, that they can even stake it out themselves. But, yeah, we probably should help them a little bit more if I can.
You were saying you don't have to hear, I didn't know.
So, no, that, if we do that, it helps us down the road when we get to redoing everything else, I know that they're done correctly and we just move on from there.
And what I've been doing is sending my, my field guy out to do some of that. If nobody's got objections, we'll just continue doing that with my field guy rather than sending out a registered land surveyor to establish those grades. Save you some money that way.
I got one other question, I don't know which reporter comes under, but this morning, I was walking my dogs down through Orchid Cove. And I saw these two beautiful ten-wheelers full of nice, fresh crushed rock. I said, oh my God, they're gonna fix the road. But there was a gun club that bought that stuff. And it's not on here, and it hasn't been done in two months. And we haven't dumped any crushed stone at the water plant for repairs on the road to the gun club.
Actually, it is on here.
Oh, I missed it.
It's in the report.
It's in the report.
Okay.
So how do we get a couple trucks like that to start working on the pot?
We are trying to get somebody to spread it. And the intent was that you guys said, when they're out there cutting the airplane gap, that can they spread it too if we dump the stone? And so they haven't gotten back to us on that.
Can we find somebody else?
Steve has a tractor.
Well, we do the well field, can we catch the, you, catch that stretch of Union Road that's gravelled?
Yeah, just a little, are you, you want what portion of it? I mean, you guys had it fixed not long ago.
Just tell me to stay on top of them, because now they're getting traffic.
First, we can get a, a load of stone drop off near the plant entrance, then we could just.
That's not about.
Throw them out of those stone drop and we'll spread it when we fix that.
There we go, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another job, well done.
Kind of combine things when we can. All right, let's see, Mitch already mentioned in his report about the generator control board, so we're, we're working with Mitch on that. I did have a chance to meet with Sal Marza, Darth, about their stormwater system. And I, I just need to develop a plan for the board to consider the various options that are available there and how you might want to proceed with that. I've got an outline made up and some of the options, just from, just so you, food for thought, is we can do nothing, that's always an option. Or we can take a look at taking over the entire system, including transferring the South Florida permit. Or we can do something in between those two.
I thought we agreed to that last meeting that we were taking.
Yeah, we did. Well, there's been different discussions when we met out of the field with the representatives, along with Dr. LaSheer. That maybe we would just look at taking over that portion of it that's in the roadways and not take the detention areas and so forth. But I want to present the options to you, let you know what the ramifications are, that if we take one over, are we gonna be asked to take over other locations? Just so you can make an informed decision.
What, what other location?
Yeah, that's my next question, because I know we're one of those, because Stellamaris South, actually, we own the, are not own, we're responsible for the stormwater management as we found that. Trying to get a great, Mitch was very nice to try to put in for me, except that McNichols made it about a foot short. And so I'm in discussion with them to get it fixed, but I know we're responsible for that, so how many others are there in those?
All the condos alongside Newport. Would fall underneath that category. That they maintain their own stormwater systems.
So what have they been doing to maintain it?
That I don't know, we have.
That's like out of mind.
Yeah, but, but again, that's not your responsibility because you're not the permit holders in that area. If South Florida would come out and do an inspection and find them in violation, they would be in violation and not you. In your case, the only South Florida permit that you've got right now, well, multiple ones, you do have one on the wastewater plant, water plant facility. And you also do have a permit on the K's.
So if we, if we said we wanted to take over their permit, would they come out and inspect it first, South Water, South Florida?
They could as part of the transfer process, if we took over the permit, they may come out and do it. And, and again, if we're taking over the permit, we would probably want to survey it to make sure it's correct before we would even agree to take it over.
Didn't we, but again, we talked about parity in the last meeting about what are we doing for all the other streets? And we gotta do the same for that one, is that what we said?
There's that question, yes, about parity when treating everybody the same.
That's what I thought you said. I think there should be parity. I think that's only fair, and we keep dancing around this thing, let's make a move on it.
You're saying take them all, take them all over and.
No, I'm saying, why is Stellamaris North, I think it is, why is that one treated differently by us than all the others?
Because, because they have a, they never signed, there's a legal agreement that says that they're responsible for the stormwater. We never took that from them when we took the road. And that's the reason why there's a difference between the two.
Yeah, yeah, and we've never taken over responsibility for the roads or drainage within those condominium associations off Newport either. So there's no agreement in place. Stellamaris North is one of those, another unique one where we've got responsibility for the pavement, but not the drainage in that area along with.
But then what we ran into, and I don't know what I'm talking about, is when you were discussing the pavement that we need to repave. Then there was a problem with the drainage and where we're gonna. that we need to repave, then there was a problem with the drainage and where we're gonna do something in the middle. And it kind of goes together and it feels like we're spinning our wheels on it.
Well, what we proposed was trying to go ahead and what we're, it's what's called an inverted proud road.
Right, right.
Where the water comes to the center instead of off the sides. And what was, what's happening is the water's accumulating in that center area because it's hard for it to drain to the catch basins.
But there's some highs and lows and so forth.
And over time, where the water sits, asphalt tends to deteriorate the quickest. So, we had suggested maybe putting a concrete gutter in there to help prolong the life of the pavement. And the question is, it's a little bit, it's two-edged. Part of, part of it is drainage improvement. Part of it is also roadway improvements. Where that starts and stops is a gray area.
But the drainage system itself underground is fine. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just surface.
We can repave it and not have any trouble.
We could repave that and not put that gutter in.
Okay.
But it would not probably have as long a life as if we did put that concrete gutter in.
Okay. Where's Frank Lee when you want him?
Oh, there he is. There he is. And just a funny clarification. We've never made an inspection of the underground pipes out there.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, I can see a can of worms.
If, if, if you do choose to pursue the route, it takes over the underground pipes. We would probably want you to do an inspection.
One issue.
Yeah, totally.
Thank you so much. I would respectfully, first of all, thank you for looking at this. It's really appreciated. True. Um, I have a somewhat different perspective and I think I have the information that's on the panel. I, I absolutely agree with the concept of parity. I think that's an important concept. Uh, so to go to the, if I'm working from the end backwards, we're paying taxes to maintain the roads and the storm sewers and catchment bases before the out. We also, to you, because that's your, you have the McDonald's franchise of this area. And I can't get, you know, my egg McMuffin anywhere else. Don't just you. I want to do something with my storm sewer system out there. Can't go to Collier County because they said no, or the islands. That's their business. I can't go to a blank city. I can't create an entity and buy insurance and, and create tax authority and stuff. I cannot create one because for the island CID has the 100% franchise. You are the only game in that game.
Good point.
So, we're paying to maintain the, the ones you do own. And gosh, you guys do a good job. You do, and I know. But we're also paying again to maintain our street, but we don't get a tax credit for paying twice. So, if you look at it that way, I understand that the condominiums don't pay as much as, you know, and I'm not arguing, but my favorite. But I do understand this. We don't get a tax credit for paying twice. That's third point. Second point is, I went back and looked as hard as I could. As I understand, in 2003, when the county signed off on this system, the CID had an opportunity. They had an obligation. One, they had to sign off on this system. It could not be built without CID saying yes. At that point, I think, I do not know what I just said was fact. Now, I'm gonna go to speculation. I'm assuming when you signed off, you had a right to either require us to inspect and turn in plans or you had an inspector on site or something, but I don't know that. Your good counsel probably could tell you that. I don't know. But somebody had to prove it. Time passes, people went bankrupt, things happen. We all know the story. You know, there's a million of those stories in our communities. We all know them. And you had to clean all that up. I appreciate it. But here's the thing. It comes down to this. You're taking apart of a system and saying, "We're just responsible for this." That lease, I would respectfully ask you to please hear my plea and have your attorney set aside because that lease is, is, is not parity. It's not valid. It's not right. What happened was, we have some needs in the community. We wanted you to take that street in. Uh, the law firm, Beckerman-Poldoff, there's some type of law firm here in Florida, they said, "Oh, no, can't do this unless the CID takes the whole thing." And discussions took place. And all I know, I wasn't on the board, but Beckerman-Poldoff was let go by us. And the CID attorney at the time, not this good attorney, but the CID attorney then decided that he would represent both parties or did something, and he developed the lease. And when the lease came out, you were responsible for storm sewer anymore. Just the pavement. But here's what you got. I apologize. I don't have a. A fancy thing. I'd like you just to take a quick look at these three pipes. This is the cul-de-sac right here. This is the drain in the middle of Stellamaris North, right here. We went out and thanks to your good eye and help, we went through all this stuff and looked at them all. Here's what you got. God sends a good rain down and it collects, starting at the entrance to Kay's Drive. And when the water is significant, it does jump, the burn starts running down Stell North. I have fifty. It comes down to the first drainage structure, this great big beautiful thing that's required. That pipe runs back to that pond behind two of my buildings right here, our building. It goes one way. There's no effluent. So, the purpose of that pipe is to put water in that pond. Go on down and turn right to the beautiful wide cul-de-sac by our beautiful boat house. And there's a great admittance to that, to no one of those catchment bases. Guess what? One pipe goes one place into that pond behind us to build. So, I'm submitting for your consideration that those structures were required by the county, approved by, oh, let's just take a guess and say six engineers, and drawn up by the engineering firm that now represents you, I guess, generation prior or something. But I think Will Parker and Ed Ferner signed these plans. But that, those, where does the pipe go? Where's the water coming? Especially the two things. That pond is supposed to hold that water, let all the silk, dirt and stuff settle down, right? And then it's supposed to flow out another pipe. It goes out and goes where? Right over to the swell underneath the road onto our place. And we take all that water back here to deal with it. On that part that we've been dictating maintaining, we just spent 1.2 million dollars redoing back there. So, we got a skin in this game too. Now, I'm not an engineer, so I ask patiently to stay with you. I'm not just a publisher. We're close to the end. That dirt and water off those streets, when it comes in there, and if the thing, if all the dirt falls down the bottom, when it does that, it starts building up. So, since 2003, that pond's been filling up with dirt. So, that bowl doesn't hold as much water as it used to, okay? Never been cleaned out. The effluent pipe puts all the water over there. So, if you just take the pavement on the road and you don't take the ponds, again, that leaves us in the utility business. State law won't let us go into the utility business. We couldn't do it anyway. We're paying twice, always. We can't go to the county because they give the authority to you. You can't go there for the city. We literally have a, we're not in the water and sewer business. That's what you guys do. So, it's not just a matter of parity. It's just a matter of what works and what doesn't work. And one last thing. I don't, that, that lease, I don't want to argue about that. It absolutely says that you will maintain the paved part. And, and some people say it says we do the storm water. And I'm saying to you, okay, what if it does? There's a difference between what you can do and what you should do and the right thing and what, you know, and, and I think in your hearts, you all know what the right thing is on this. Last point. If you take the position of, well, we need to look at all those pipes. We need to see what shape they're in and we're gonna send the condo owner to bill, bring them up when we take them over. You charge $250 an hour. Pump, bring up a vacuum and put it in your, in your big truck. That truck weighs as long as a table. That's a big truck. Holds a lot of stuff. I don't know about. When you did your water meter news, that's tech. You went out and you, that big old vacuum went in and they filled that truck up, they filled that truck up, they filled that truck up. And the reason it's $250 an hour is you have to then truck it away and dump it somewhere. And I get that. You should. I can show you the video of your water meter replaced by jet dumping all that sand into that break where the pipe only goes into our basin. So, I'm saying, we don't want to get into a figurepointing thing where we're going, "Will you dump stuff in our basin?" And would you have signed the document that said that? I would just say to this, this is kind of simple. Let's tell the engineers you're on it. A lot of papers. If you take over the system that you should have been in charge of, we'll say it's our fault. We didn't do the right thing. It's all our fault. We apologize if that's the case. It may not be. Just take the dead young thing over, put the truck down, bash those pipes, you know? And, uh, by the way, your guy called me, he was a builder. He called me within three hours when I thought we had a problem. And I better pump those pipes out. And I couldn't do it. It was 2:50 an hour. No problem with your people. That's fantastic. I'm just saying this is the right thing to do. This is not complex. It's simple. Where are you gonna end up from this point forward? In a big figurepointing compound complex, that's what it's gonna do. As for the other streets, I don't know about them, but I, as just if I could switch hats for a minute, just being an owner in the CID area, I think you're in the business. And I think those other streets ought to be in your purview as well. And this is my personal opinion. And I thank you for listening to me. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a lawyer. Trying to speak for our folks. We thank you.
Frank, let me ask you two questions. One of the questions is prior, and I don't know if you were there. Prior to 2003, when this, when Cox did this lease, whatever it was, how was it handled then?
Wasn't anything there.
Was anything there? That's when it was built?
No, the, the, the system was put in and then the condos were built, but the system had to be approved. And the county did sign the plan. The system had to be approved by the county. I am told, and again, your attorney would know it, and your engineer would know much more than I would, but I'm told it's absolutely impossible for a builder to get the permit and go forward if there's a governmental authority that has jurisdiction for water and sewer. Go forward and build something without their approval. You had to.
So, then what in 2003, where the, the buildings weren't built yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
A little bit.
So, why did the lease happen? And why is it a lease?
Uh, I think the document, are we talking maintenance agreement?
Oh, the lease is years and years and years later. Yeah.
So, the documents are 2014.
Yeah.
The document, but it's called maintenance agreement and grant of easement.
So, that's after all the buildings are in, everything's done?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. But both our people came to you and said, "Hey, we want you to take over the street. Take your street." And then originally, you were gonna take the whole thing and then, work, uh, let me look this way, a chair. Working under the guidance of your lawyer and us not having a lawyer.
Yeah.
Which decided that you would take the street and we would, I don't want to be a circle, but I would guess you went to Google, looked up conflict of interest. Well, see that right there would have been picture.
Okay, but so, the builder built it correctly and until 2014, who took care of the drainage?
I let. You did. Let me interrupt here. In 2003, when the plans were developed, your engineer, which was Ron Benson.
Right.
Stated that the developer had to basically build the drainage systems in that parcel per the specifications that the CID would take it over.
Let me, I, I don't know the history exactly, but let me, let me, maybe make some statements. Uh, I think when it was originally built, it was built as a condominium plant. It had to go through a procedure with the county, that site development plan approved. The county would have done all the reviews on that. And at the time of the condominium approval, documents and so forth, there was nothing handed over to the utility, to, to the CID itself. The whole system, I believe, including utilities, was all private. Then when the CID expanded and changed their wastewater system, their irrigation system, we went with the reuse system to include also the fire protection, that's when the, the CID took over the utility portion. And part of that agreement, I believe, was also taking over the pavement. There was no taking over the drainage or anything else at that time. We just made a very limited acceptance. Originally, that condominium, but, uh, that condominium complex was served by a master water meter. And then it was switched over to individual meters as part of that changeup. And that's why the easement required.
So, my, my question is, what was the date on that? Is that, everything we just said? We can't find a single piece of paper. I've never heard a word of that. And I, and what were the dates you said you, that we, the first time?
The agreement we have is December 29th, 2014.
That's 14. You're talking way back.
I'm talking way back when, when it was first developed. It was developed as a condominium complex, a fire. It was. It was not a planet subdivision.
Well, actually, it's, it's, it's titled, um.
I think what Dave.
There is, and, and the, uh, Ron made the recommendation because they did not put the storm system in that he wanted, that the storm system be left out of the maintenance. And it first approached the CID to take it over. There, there was a problem with the sanitary.
Can I say the minutes of that meeting?
Well, not now.
Do that.
They have to send you some.
Yeah, they, they, so.
But wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't care what it said before. I mean, we're, we're dealing with now and you had me when you said you paid your assessments, just like everybody else pays. I mean, I pay my assessment. The swales get taken care of, the road gets taken care of. I think all the condo owners pay their fair share and I don't see why there should be so much confusion here. I just, I just think we should, it should all be taken over. I mean, to me, if the board let them put in that thing with that stupid agreement, then the board made a mistake years ago forever allowing it even to go. They should have gone by Ron's. Even if it cost a little bit more for that, they should, they should have not okayed everything unless they followed the agreement. But the board didn't. The board let them do it as a waiver or whatever. So.
It's not necessarily the board that made that decision. It was, in many cases, it was the original developer who made the decision not to dedicate over those facilities to the CID.
Okay, so now we punish everybody that owns a condo. See that? I, I can't, I can't go with that.
That was a developer's choice. They weren't dedicated over to CID.
So, like, like what you, we said before, we should be, we're, everybody's paying to maintain this place. Let's do it right.
Who do I go to? You're right. And the question is, it's simple. What you can do and what's the right thing to do. But if, if all that's all the ways that, who do I go to?
I don't think you have to go to anybody.
No, I think you did. Let me just make one.
You paid the ops.
Yeah, let me just say one thing though. It, one of the problems in this district is there's been a lot of slip and slide. I'm gonna give you another one. See if it sounds familiar. Orchid Cove was built in 2006, 2007. We pay for all of our landscaping twice. We pay the same company to do the landscaping and then we pay the CID. Same thing every month.
Except, except it, it's not the same thing. Now, look at any municipal system. Look at public, down the road. They pay for all their landscaping. They pay for all their stormwater, water sewer. And the county provides everything to their site. So, are they paying points?
I pay some. I, I do that. I don't know.
And if I could, if I could just respond, I think Cal makes a very valid point, but I'd like to speak to him. And assuming he's right, here's the difference, because you have the only McDonald's franchise in town. See, I don't have the right to compete and go hire another company to do so. I, the only people I can meet, I'm stuck. It's you guys.
That's no different than Collier County or Maple.
But you know what, Collier County, Collier County gave, as I understand it, Collier County said, when it comes to water or sewer and roads, you're the utility. They said, in this area, draw a line, or the Allen CID, we give our authority to them. You are, I believe. I hope, I hope I'm sure that's the shape you did, no. You are a subset of Collier County. You are Collier County.
No. Our charge is chapter 194 statutes. So the district was established as a community, it's a community development district, called a community improvement. That's our term. But you're not a subset of Collier County.
But you were also about to talk about it, right?
An ordinance was adopted establishing the district.
But Frank, Frank, I'm not arguing with you. I agree with you. Now, I don't know if everybody else does or not.
We're talking about money, but I agree with you too. I don't, I heard everything you said. Everything you said made sense. The developer, this developer was the same way. He's, he didn't do what the CID at the time wanted him to do. And he was a bad guy. That big pipe that used to be out here, that was one of the things. And it took years to get rid of it, but now it's gone. And it was a power play. I don't know if this one was, but the developer didn't do what the engineer suggested. Later on, in 2013 or 14, you trusted Cox, the attorney. You didn't have an attorney. Shame on you, but that's trust. And Cox did this agreement. That's what happened.
And again, the board approved that too.
I think one of the differences here in their favor for argument is if that pipe runs all the way through and that's your main distribution pipe or collection system for stormwater and discharging it out. I'm not sure they should pay for that.
No, no, we, we, they were never, they never transferred ownership of that.
Right.
At the very beginning. There was no intent to ever transfer ownership at the beginning.
But it is part of our system.
Well, no, you don't hold the permit. They're the per ready.
Okay.
So we have no responsibility for that part at all.
And want to be independent.
Yeah, unquestioned. If we're going to, if we're going to look at this, why don't we look at, I agree with Russ. Why don't we look at taking over everything in the port? And make us in charge of it all. Get the permits that we need. Turn them over to us and we're in charge of it, because it's stupid to have one section being taken care of by the CID and Stellamaris North and Stellamaris South are out of that because they're taking over their own and what is it, Evening Star or whatever? Let's just find out what it's going to cost and to take them all over and just we'll be the ones in charge of the stormwater.
Yeah, there is no parity. There needs to be.
I agree.
That would make you, there's going to be some things that if you do choose to go that route, obtaining the easements and so forth, transferring permits, making sure that the system is reasonably constructed, that there's no major defects that you need, that need to be corrected somewhere along the line.
All right. Okay, we understand that.
The next thing, next question may come up is ownership of roadways. Now, that may be another Pandora's box in that there's a lot of roadways within the condo associations and so forth that are not built to any kind of public roadway standards.
And typically the condominium associations cannot deed the road because it is part of a common area and each union owner has an undivided interest in the common area. So, you know, maybe you can be leased, but you have to meet certain specs, you have to meet county standards in order to be leased.
Or can they treat it as easements?
No, the chapter 190 says we can have district roads equal to or greater than the specifications of the county. So if they don't meet county specs for roads such as this, then the district can't lease them. But I have other districts where in the condominium associations, the district leases the road. Now they're open to the public then. So there can't be any restrictions on public access to those streets.
If this is something you want to pursue, I mean, have I give David's direction to identify all those systems? Get with Tony and find out what's the best vehicle to, you know, accept? And we'll approach the condominium association or whoever's involved and bring the plan back.
Yeah, one other, one other aspect. I'll second it. I know you all talked about cost, but Dave's mentioned a number of times that when you have older infrastructure, how long has that been there? 20 years maybe?
Yeah, a lot of us have been there for 20 years.
And so when you have the, under software orders rules and just generally, the per ready is responsible for compliance plans and specifications up until the time of transfer of the operating permit. And when you have capital facilities like that built that long ago, whether there's maintenance costs, then there's capital improvement costs. We all know that. So that becomes a question of the level of inspection that typically I recommend as boards counsel. They have inspections performed because there might be significant capital items that need to be handled. I think David would say the same thing. I understand, I heard the presentations saying, please don't tag us with any of those costs, but I think that's an important consideration because then that comes out of the operating budget or capital budget of the entire district. So that's.
You've got to make it, find out, yes, what they are about. So that's what we're going to do. Let's find out what it costs to take it.
And keep the roads on as much as, the interior roads that the condos have. I don't want to get wrecked with the man.
Is it fair to say, technically speaking, just for conversation's sake, in a CDD that's built from the ground up, this would never come up?
Not necessarily, no.
Because they would still do the roads separately?
I have other districts where some roads were private at the inception. And some later point in time, those residents, once it became resident control boards, went to the board and said, hey.
Oh, but there was already, there was already homes in there.
Correct.
But I'm saying a brand new one from the ground up.
Oh, no, no, what I'm saying is a brand new district.
Right.
Developer comes in and plots and he plots the street as private.
Right, right.
And then builds it until the district doesn't own it. The district may have some of the infrastructure, but not the road. It may not even have all the infrastructure.
Right.
And later point in time, fast forward 10 years, the board and the residents say, same argument. Let's have a uniformative approach. This is one community. Why shouldn't we, the district, be handling all of the infrastructure? And that's, those conversations have taken place. Like I said, in Phyllis Creek, there are a number of roads that initially were private and or part of condominium associations as not being district roads.
Individual condominium associations.
And were individual neighborhoods. And so the entire community.
Yeah.
And so what you have, you have Phyllis Creek Parkway was a district road in public and you have some off streets for not. Some were, some weren't. And so the board said, this is confusing. So some are leased, some have been leased.
Yeah. At some point too, when, when, when the district would take over some of these roadways too, if they're gated, those gates have to come down.
No, they don't.
Oh, no, the public has to be able to have access to the gates. Okay.
I believe, there are enough historical concerns, things here, that we, this thing can grind to a total halt. I thank you because I think you, I think you're doing the right thing and saying, let's get parity. Let's find out the cost. Let's look at this and go forward. I don't, I'm going to work out my community because all we need to do is have you come pump those pipes out and take a look at, you know, all that good. We've been graciously collecting all that dirt and silt from your system in our pond and we won't charge any rental for it if you want to make a withdrawal.
Maybe can you? We're not, we're not going to do any of this unless you take us all to McDonald's.
That's right.
Cheeseburgers on me. Actually, I think if this were to go positive step forward where we do the right thing, we'll all have happy meals.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
We started a motion on this. Did we approve it yet?
No, I'm going to move this, second it, do direct staff and research and prepare for a transfer of all those areas.
Financial.
Yeah, financial and everything.
Yeah, and stay away from the drive with the roads if you can.
Yeah.
Just look at the struggle.
I thought we were in charge of the roads.
Where what?
I thought, I thought we were in charge.
No, 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 I'm talking about like the, like in the condos over on the other side over there. In case they have, you have the main street.
Yeah.
And then you have in front of the.
Oh, okay.
If you want to consider that.
But we are in charge of the main street.
The main streets.
Because those, yeah.
Union.
Because actually those parking areas are just theirs. They're not a road, right? They don't have a name.
Yeah. Can I, I always advise my board to stay away from parking.
Yeah.
We need to vote it, right?
Yeah.
So that's where we're going?
I have one question though. If you, you come to the CID for approval and the CID felt what they were doing wasn't really the way you should go, why wasn't it stopped?
That's a good question.
If, if they're not dedicating or having intent to dedicate the facilities over to the district, it doesn't matter. We're out of the picture.
Yeah. So they chose not to follow our suggestion and do it their way?
Right. Okay.
All right, so take a vote.
Yeah, all in favor of what we're doing here?
I.
What we're doing. And my wife, Oklahoma, would say clear as mud.
I think, I think we've covered pretty much everything underneath mine at this point, plus a few others.
Yeah.
Do we, should we take, is this about engineering or?
Yeah, the same question.
Come on, come on out.
I'm Hallen Stipler. I'm in Evening Star K. I was just wondering, are we in the same predicament as, if you, you said something about Evening Star K? And I said, I thought, oh, should we have the same kind of problems still, Mary?
I may have used Evening Star K. I was referring to whatever the other, the other, I don't think you are.
This one's kind of unique.
Well, he's going to identify all of them.
He's going to look at them all.
Yeah, yeah. Now, Evening Star, is that the one that's directly, it's off Newport. It's off Newport.
On the left.
And it sometimes floods at the middle. It looks like a.
It's got open drainage. It's got open drainage.
Yeah, yeah.
That one I think is already part of the district responsibility.
I think that's true.
So, and I don't know now, but it said it had approval for a bridge from my home to the water. I'm not sure where that is, because I've never seen it. But if I wanted to put something like that, do I need to come to you?
You mean in the back and the.
Over the swell?
Okay, yeah, the swell, that's totally different. That's not.
Yeah, that's probably, you, you say you've got an agreement already from the district?
Well, supposedly it was approved and I.
Well, it would probably, probably be good if you did, contact me, we go take a look, evaluate it and then bring it before the board just to get some type of approval.
If it was approved, it was probably recorded.
Yeah.
So I'm probably going to.
Yeah.
I got a name and address.
Would that be on a D?
Okay.
Totally, it might show up in the title.
And it goes.
Okay. No, 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 not yet. I just got one more thing. I'm, I'm big on invoices today. Okay? And I don't like your invoices either. Okay? All the stuff that you're going to be talking about and doing, I need you to break it down more than just met with this, discuss track A, blah, blah, blah. You know what I mean? I need, you get an invoice from Tony, he lists everything. You go get one from Soto, he lists everything, just like I didn't really like the one from Soto Utilities. I'm not questioning the, what you're doing. I just want to know where everything is applied. Okay, instead of just, like, you have senior project manager for a meeting and a senior, senior engineer. But what is that? There's, there's two people.
Actually, what I do with a lot of my time to be more fair to you, is it, what I'm doing is more engineering related versus senior project manager, I split my time.
Yeah.
Just to blend the rates, so I'm not giving you with the full amount.
Oh, but, oh, so you're the same person?
I'm the same person.
So you're.
If I spend six hours at this meeting, I'm going to charge you three, three.
But I think what you're looking for is a daily.
Yeah, but just, yeah, I mean, all this work you're going to.
It's daily. The lawyer gives us daily what he.
You have to understand, I went to the Life Rock School of Detailing Statements.
Right. No, but that's, you know, I mean, you, you do have stuff listed, all the things that you did. But I want it to be associated with the invoice, if you can do that. I mean, you got, you got a clerical person there that makes more money than I do.
Yeah, we typically don't itemize by day.
Right.
Well, it doesn't have to be by day. Because you're probably not working on our stuff every day, are you, or?
This patch was kind of crazy.
Okay, but, but yeah, I, I need, I need more information. I just, you know what I mean?
We can fill in, give you a little more information on what we're doing.
Like, yeah, like if you, if you, if you met with Steve and you did that, separate that out from meeting with track A and D. Separate the times, you know, are, are those?
Those are the same.
Those are his tracks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You might look, what Charlie does for habitat.
Okay.
He's got a pretty cheat yield.
Yeah, I, I just, you know.
We, we can do that moving forward, a barnier that November may not be able to give you that kind of detail. I'll try to fill in the blanks a little bit better.
Because we're talking about 10 grand, you know? So, I mean, it's two months, but still, it's money.
Yeah.
And this one was huge.
Yeah, I'll work going ahead and especially with the December time, November, we're almost up with, with November and I don't have that kind of details scribbled down necessarily.
Okay. All right, that's good, that's good, yeah. So now we're on to district management board.
First thing I have is amendment of the path budget. And sewer water doesn't have to be amended because you were under budget. But the auditors are going to want a amended budget reflecting, you know, the overruns and then that you're using funds to balance the basis of spending. You got plenty of money. It's not an issue of money. Most of your overruns, one of them is the engineer, but that's because of the CID that you had done. The sewer, or I'm sorry, mosquito spraying went over quite a bit. So we're proposing $37,000 to be amended to increase the, those expenses. And then capital outlay, since the water system, the utility users and those we put in there for the irrigation users, but all the irrigation revenue goes into the utility fund. So we didn't charge any of the heater expenses for the change out to the general fund. We charged it to the water sewer fund. So, you know, with a few adjustments on the amendments to balance the budget and you take $79,438 that you went over and that will go into, be drawn from the reserves or, you know, fund balance.
Yeah, and I, I would just want everybody to understand, a lot of times certain things come up, you, you can't project in your budget that you're going to have to look at underground pipes and do whatever. So we pretty much, I think this is the first in four years that I've seen a budget amendment have to happen. And we've had a lot of items come up during the past year. And then I know with mosquito spraying, it was mostly just the timing of paying for the chemicals.
Yeah, we started way early.
So.
And you went full chill right through the end of this.
Right, right.
Now we're ending way late too. It's track.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. See, I get different, I get different stuff from people on the mosquitoes.
I was going to bring that up too.
I didn't get bit by any.
That's, see, and I, and I haven't had much of a problem with that. I've talked to other people that walk and they say the mosquitoes are bad.
But my husband says it's because I'm Polish. I kill the mosquito.
So you need a, you need a motion to also move.
I'm sorry, who was the second, Michelle?
Ron favorite?
Hey, you've got a copy of a financial report. You've got a very great condition. You know, there's no, you know, noted concerns. You're starting to collect your assessments and that came, you got $124,000 in this month. It's not reflected in here, but you know, people like to take advantage of that 4% discount. I can answer any questions you have on the financials.
I only have one suggestion because what happened this year with that budget amendment, I'd like to be ahead of the game, know what's happening or what's coming down the pipe. And if I look at my numbers from last year, there were, if you compare the budget to what we're actually, is going out the door, it's, a lot of months were on the negative side, a loss. So, and I think. side, a loss, so, and I think part of that is, some items, I think we should be more concerned about how we extend it over the 12 months when we're budgeting. It's, you do that, like you do it with the special assessment, you know, from tax collector, you're identifying, you get your, most of it in the beginning and the end, but some of these items, not all of them, but we can't just say it's gonna be the same every month, because it doesn't work out that way, and if you want, next year I'll work closer on that.
Yeah, uh, some of them, and we accrue through the year, such as insurance, so you'll see in the.
So that's gonna be the same, right?
That's the same, but it's all paid upfront.
Right.
So, but we just expense it throughout the year.
Right, but this month, for example, in the general fund, we have a loss of 12,000, and I think I wanna be more on top of it, to see, you know, why is it happening?
Trying to think of how we would do this, I, every.
We can't do it on all items.
By the board, so, I mean, we could just transfer it to a spreadsheet or something, like the CIP for, with the engineer, that was a $25,000 expenditure that wasn't budgeted because it.
Right, but I understand that, and I would see that, that month, and I would know that's why there's a loss, but if we find, let's say, like, engineering on the average, let's say it's 10,000 a month, let's budget that way, or let's not budget, like, lower and then one month be high, it's, it's just, I wanna get a better grip on.
Yeah, you want more averaging, you want more averages.
Less averaging.
If we, don't mark the history. If we don't have the history, like, it's easy to do with the revenues for the assessment.
Yeah.
Because we've got, we've got a pattern, but if we don't, we can't project, or we would have budgeted them.
Right.
Things like, you know, special projects that come up, and which we don't know, so, but we could put a spreadsheet where we can identify what it is that caused that overrun.
Do you spread special projects that come up, or just, and why, I'm not, I'm not challenging you, why do you pay the insurance all upfront?
Prepaid, you always do that.
You have to do, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's.
You just disperse it through your books monthly.
Yeah.
But, no, I have, I keep a spreadsheet, I love this stuff, you know? But, yeah, I would just, I'll work closer with you at the budget times.
Okay.
So if we pay everything upfront?
No.
No.
Not everything. Well, not everything, but you pay the insurance upfront, you pay an item upfront, whatever, whatever it may be, why disperse it? Why not just do it?
Because that's what it costs you monthly.
That's how you budget.
I know it costs you that monthly, but then you want actual, so why don't you just put it in?
It is put in there monthly.
Yeah, but your bottom line's not really that, because you've already paid it.
No, that's a cash approach, that's.
That's how I work.
Yeah, no, there's different approaches on how you account for that.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not an accountant, but I don't know, I thought you said you wanted.
Disapproval, the other is cash basis.
I mean, I don't care.
Yes.
Yes. Because it's just to know what's actually costing you every month.
Right.
Not how much you're spending, what it's costing.
Municipal financing is a modified tool system, it's basically a cash system, but then the auditors tell you what you have to approve and what you don't, and they'll adjust things at the end of the year.
It's different from public accounting.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, but I put a motion out to accept the financial statements for October as presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
The historical book, that, I talked to Brian, we're gonna finish that up, and he should have it for the next month, he wasn't sure there was still interest from the board to finish it, so he put it on hold, I'm just gonna not charge everything, walk away from him, I said, no, the board wants it.
Oh, we have that, so.
So, once I reassure him on that, he'll finish it up, and then I'll review it, and we should have no problem getting it.
Can we have him here when, when you give it to us, so we can ask him questions?
Is he here?
Yeah.
He retired.
Yeah, he's retired, but he still is in the area.
He said he was in Virginia.
He was on vacation, he is in Virginia, he's dead, he's there, he's in both.
Right.
So, but he's staying near his mother, so that's right, in my.
And the wife, he smoked by the house yesterday, I spent for about 10 minutes.
If we could just have him here, just ask, you know, because, I mean, you know, show we got some questions.
So. The, the next item is a discussion on the board incurring, you know, expenses for legal and engineering, and what we've always done is if any board member asks questions, then, you know, that means that we get engineering or legal expenses. I guess if that's being changed, or, you know, if you're not comfortable with that, I need to know that, so that we could monitor and control it, but, I mean, if, if either of the three of us, a board member calls and asks for something, we jump on it, and, you know, do whatever it takes to get an answer.
No, I think it, it, I think we need permission, and we can't just arbitrarily go out and incur expenses, it's the same when we sit here, we vote, it is a certain dollar amount, but we vote before we do something.
Okay, yeah.
And I think.
But that is, rest in mind, you send me an email that says this or that, and then if I've got a, maybe it's right after your meeting, then we gotta wait a month before we get that answer.
Yeah, true.
Well, you're, you're allowed to authorize up to a certain amount, aren't you?
Well, sure, but I don't wanna authorize and then get greened out at the meeting.
You email everybody, everybody else's emails, don't you, or no?
Uh, not all, some of it, if somebody, I mean, it's just, if it's something that's far reaching.
But I mean, if it affects.
Or somebody requests, like, you requested, I share all of them, so I send them all up, I didn't before then.
Well, but maybe you should, you know, anybody, any board member that requests anything.
Because we can't talk to each other, so we're communicating with you, and you be the one to share.
Okay, but I'm not gonna make a decision if we should or shouldn't incur a legal expense or a.
No, that doesn't change, that doesn't change.
So, if, if somebody requests, something be research, and it requires legal or engineering expenses, we're gonna authorize it, but I will send out an email to everyone so that you're aware.
Yeah, send out the request.
And if we have any objection.
Okay.
You can't vote on it by email.
Correct. So, objection, one other aspect, too, different than Cal, different than David possibly, I'm governed by the rules of professional responsibility with Florida Bar, and the district and the board is a pleural body, is my client, and if anything comes to my intention that's adverse to the interests of the board as a pleural body in the district, I'm obligated to respond and represent the district and board, so it's in the balance of the law. So even if the manager, quite frankly, were to say, no, you can't do that, I'm obligated by my ethics code to do something, whether I notify the board, whether I ask the board to have emergency meeting something, but that's a different set of rules I operate on, and I work with managers, I mean, Cal understands those obligations, but just saying that that's a particular area where if the board says, don't do something, it's a pleural body, that's one thing, but the manager, in my opinion, can't tell me not to do it if it's my, if the board's interest and the district's interest would be protected if I need to do something.
So I have the right to go to you, and if it incurs cost, then it's gonna go to the management.
It's a general matter, it's just a general matter, yeah, not, not something that, in other words, if I hear something from you, it says, Tony, I hear that so-and-so is planning to sue the district, or we have a strip and fall, or something fall, or hey, we have a dangerous condition.
Right.
You know, that's something that implicates the district, exposure liability, and I, or something else that comes to my attention, probably go through a party, not even follow the district, I have an obligation to advise the manager and the president chair, and say, here's what's going on, so I just want, and if I hear from a board member that, hey, something is going on that's adverse.
Yeah, that's.
To the district.
Yeah.
Just as long as, that's, that's peculiar obligation I have.
Well, your contract's with us, right?
I'm sorry?
Your contract is with us, with the board.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
We're similar, too, if I, but I'm not an individual.
But I didn't see a contract for you. I saw everybody's contract, so is he part of you, does he work for you, or?
No, it's an independent contract.
Right, because I didn't, I didn't get his contract.
Yeah, their contract is probably from 1990.
1990, it's just been renewed and basically updated as far as.
Okay, because I thought he was working for you, which I didn't think was a good idea.
I recognize also that I work with Cal and Dave on this, number one, number two, if I get, generally if I get call or communication from a resident, I generally will incur it, unless it's something that's, as far as immediate emergency attention to protect the district, I will work with Cal and Dave on that, you know, not just respond and incur expense on the district, I mean, I've had sort of that policy with other districts, where they say if I get contacted by, because we have one district where this one resident writing multi-page letters to me all the time, an email, on and on, finally brought them to the board, said, what do you all want me to do? They said, notify the chair, notify the manager, so I, that's my policy if I get outside of any questions.
Again, Cal and I work pretty closely, we both work in another community also, Gateway and Cal.
See, Dave, let's get it down to eight grand, okay? Let's soften it up a little.
$79.99.
Yeah, $79.99, I like that better.
Tony, you're very, you're very similar, I go out there, I see something that is not threatening public health or safety, I've, I've got that duty to inform you, or you have the same obligation?
Yes.
Okay, so we will say that if somebody asks for something, and I feel the engineer, the attorney needs to be involved, I'll send that request from the board member to everyone, say, we're going to do it unless you.
No, just do it, don't ask, just notify it.
Just inform us.
Just inform us.
Yeah.
Then we have you to jump on.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, airplane club, I mentioned earlier, that it's too wet for them to get in there, they maintain some area where they fly the plane, but they tell us they're gonna do it, and we're waiting for, you know, some indication for the bridge is gonna do it, we'll just wait.
Let me ask you a question on these guys, and it was in lieu of paying us, and the deal was done a while ago, but it was my understanding, perhaps wrongly, that the airplane folks were gonna have everything mowed four times a year, or twice a year or something, and there was actual agreement with the previous CID and them, is that correct?
It was up to get that to 18 inches.
So are they doing it, though, I mean, they're all right with it?
That happens, I think it's more noticeable.
It's too wet.
Oh, they can't help that.
And I think it's more noticeable now that hotels down, a lot of what you see is the county.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so they've been all right, so we can.
The lightning strike, the insurance claim has been submitted, so we're just waiting to hear from them, and that's on the irrigation line.
We, we can prove that was lightning?
Uh, yeah.
I know it's an hypothesis, I didn't know if we actually got struck by lightning.
Mitch has to prepare an affidavit that, in his opinion, it was like, he hasn't done that, so, uh, the next would be the ERC transfer, and there's a.
No, field manager?
No.
And G. Are you up there?
Yeah, G, yes, sir.
I have a motion on this.
Okay.
I motion that we suspend any discussion of the ERCs until a such time that we promulgate the new rules change, except for our discussion on the ERCs that update, that we are doing the new methodology for the O and M.
And after the hearing.
And, yes, okay, but if you wanna do that, that ERC transfer request, what that is, you know what that is, or no? It's, it's, you know. This is under the current rules. I understand that, but it's a transfer, and we still get paid the full ERCs, you're gonna end up getting the full under 20 ERCs even after you transfer it.
Right.
There's not, not gonna be any dilution at all, zero, no loss of ERCs.
My understanding is, though, and I, is, what is the understanding, is it currently, you can't transfer ERCs and we're gonna speak to, opening that up?
It's.
Okay, so now the way it sits, you can transfer ERCs because we told Mac to me it couldn't two or three times.
To us, you told him it couldn't transfer to us.
Okay, but he can sell them or transfer them?
He wants to transfer.
Processes for transferring ERCs, one of them that Steve is asking for track A, it's A and B, is a transfer of ERCs between two parcels of common ownership.
The other, that's what he's doing.
That's what he's doing.
Okay.
The, the second one is a transfer of district-owned ERCs to an individual who'd like to purchase them.
Yeah.
The other one is in place is from two separate owners between two different parcels, and those are the three that the rules do provide for at this.
So how, how many, I hate asking this, how many ERCs are on the east parcel and?
They're equal.
They're equal. So they're equal.
But it's the same owner.
Okay, I understand.
It doesn't matter how many, it's the same owner.
No, I get it, but, and, and the same number of O and M and utility?
Uh, yeah, 10, 10, 6, O and M on each one.
Yeah.
Okay, even though one lot is considerably smaller.
Right, yes.
Okay, so it's transfer of ERCs, now is that all one parcel?
No.
No, two separate parcels.
It was purchased as one, but it is actually two.
Right, their, their planet is two separate.
Okay, so their planet is two, okay, so all he wants to do is, is relieve where he is and load him up on the west side.
Well, yes, but his, he's submitted an application, Tony's got it, Dave's got it, and I'm also reviewing it, but one of the problems is he wants to transfer all of the O and M, you gotta have some O and M.
I don't think we should, I don't think it should be.
But that's, he's just saying, that's part of the request.
That's part of the request, to transfer all of the, the O and M and eight of the utility.
Yeah.
Eight of the ten.
So all of that is two utilities, now.
Prorate the O and.
Now I'm back with him.
Prorate the O and M based on utility.
I'm back with you. I don't wanna discuss it, until after the hearing.
Right.
Well, but this you gotta discuss, because this is in your current rules.
Yeah.
It isn't, it isn't.
It is.
It is.
How can it be?
It is, so it's changed.
He could transfer because he's the same owner.
Right, right.
I think if you're gonna sell them, of the old rules, you need our approval, right? To sell them, but this is not a sale.
The transfer.
Yeah, you need approval no matter what, but there is a mechanism in place that the, the, the engineer and attorney have 10 days to basically review that request, or a receipt of it, and to determine whether it's sufficient or not.
And so that's why you wanted to keep the meeting open, and so.
Yes, because I just, I just got it Wednesday.
Yeah, right.
Fourth day, and I've been to other meetings, and, and I don't like.
Just a lock at once.
Rush items.
Yeah, right. One thing I think we should be aware of, rumor has it that three acres has been sold.
Oh, he came in and said it. It's gone, Jones bought it.
Yeah, so, if it hasn't, if it hasn't closed yet, yes, it's his property.
Well, I think that's.
He said Jones bought it.
And again, I've not looked at, quite frankly, any of the documents, I've seen all the emails, not just, so, just because my other meetings, my events, and I've not looked at it.
Yeah.
My concern is we're talking about same owner, but is it really gonna be the same owner?
And I'm looking at it when I review the application, and that's why I suggest and recommend it be, at the end of the meeting, this meeting be continued to a date and time certain, December 30th, I would suggest.
Do we need a motion for that now, or?
No, again, the.
There's a motion, but I'm not sure if there's a second.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That, that, if, my motion was that we suspend discussion of any ERCs until after that we have promulgated the new rules, and then we can discuss ERCs till, till the Cal's come home, except for the ERC methodology that we have already brought up.
So, so is that, and so you're still gonna talk about, at the end of the meeting, you're still gonna talk about this transfer, then, right?
Right.
No, whatever.
In two weeks, we're gonna talk, talk, alright, now, I'd like to ask another question, why do we have to?
Do we have a second, first?
You got it, well, why do we need a second special meeting for this, why can't it wait till the next meeting? Why do we need a special meeting?
I, I, I don't know.
I was just, I'll call it a mid-comination, both, all parties recognize the next. I was just, it's, I'll call it a mid-comination, both all parties recognize the next meeting's not until a month away. I don't know, and sometimes it might be, I don't know all the terms of this transaction, I just have not looked at anything, but just as sort of like a mid-range combination. But then we talk to the board, I'd say it's the board's discretion, because there is a ten-day review period for staff, which take it to next week, next week, this is
Yeah, but there's no immediacy to this, why don't we move it to the next meeting?
Going on a long time.
Yeah, so we can go on to the next meeting.
No, I think we need to end it.
We can end it at the next meeting.
They say get her done.
We can get it done at the next meeting.
I think, I think it benefits, benefits the CID if we get it over with.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's, otherwise it's
Number one, the joint team is gonna focus.
And we're, and we're gonna get everything we wanted, you're gonna get, you're not gonna lose any
Not discussing it.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, you're not gonna, so Russ, when you say that, you will withdraw your second, I'll withdraw the motion, and then you can bring this up in two weeks and go.
Yeah.
Because you will withdraw your second, I'll withdraw the motion.
But again, the staff needs to review that request, make sure it's sufficient, if I'm correct, if it's not sufficient, then we can reject it.
I'll find time, I'm not planning on eating a typical Italian meal, my mom has wedding soup and turkey and all that, so I have plenty of time.
Yeah.
Before the meeting on the third.
Right, you're
I'll withdraw my
If we withdraw, all right, but then
if we reject the proposal, give them a counter, do you have to wait another ten days?
We don't have to give them a counter.
No.
Where I read the rule, is that the application's made, staff has ten days to review, make recommendations to the board, board review, accepts it as submitted, rejects it, or accepts it with conditions or modifications.
Russ, can I just say one thing though?
And then you'll see our recommendations.
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing though, and this is what's driving me nuts about this, and it's driving all of you. Okay, here it comes, I know you're in a hurry for a hamburger, thirty days ago, Steve was right here, and he said, I would never sell the land, I don't wanna sell the land, hold on, you can use it for parkland, you can do whatever you want. And he knew at the same time that he had artist conception plans that Jones did, and he had all the drawings and everything, and a pre-approval from the county for a gas station, a warehouse, and a hundred-seat restaurant. He knew that, no, he knew it.
I have, I have copies of
And now, hold on, I understand, thirty, I do too, thirty days later, now, he's top putting on next door, Jones bought it, he's saying publicly, Jones bought it, again, and now it's not Jones that bought it. You don't know what the guy's gonna do.
That, that's what I said, things change, anybody could say, I mean, it could change.
Yeah, can I respond? Yeah. To that, when I was here, we told him in one meeting that if he submitted plans, we would adjust the ERC accordingly.
Right.
Then, he was told, when he submitted the plans for the three units on the one side, that, okay, we'll, we'll accept that, but we, it's contingent on changing that we trade as we go. So his information changed, that's why he changed his mind. We did not give him concrete information, okay, nothing was set in stone, so when we, when
We couldn't give him concrete, because the rules haven't been changed.
I'm not talking about those rules, I'm talking about the rules that we have.
But what we said was not the rules we have.
It doesn't matter, it changed when Sam said, all right, every, every one we get a CO for, we'll give you, we'll give you, you can give three back.
It's a suggestion.
Okay, which was a suggestion, which changed his thought process.
Right.
Okay, that, I'm just telling you, that's why he changes How, why would he change it? And, and that's like when I met with Tony and him, and my suggestion to him in that meeting was dump it, you're not gonna win. Okay, we met He did win, he got what he wanted. No, he didn't. We just told, he got five TRCs of what he wanted. Yeah, but he's still paying for it that whole time until he gets
Oh, sure.
Look how long, there's a house down there that's been sitting there with nothing being done for six months, because she can't get windows. Okay, so he starts something, it gets held up, hurricane, whatever, then he's stuck still paying those ERCs until he has the CO, and then we, he takes three away. Uh, so it, it's, you know, plans change. He bought the land knowing that.
There was twenty ERCs on that
He bought the land knowing that.
Paying for for twenty years.
Right.
Yeah, and to show you, to show you how he changes his mind, he bought a lot on Kay's Drive, and he, he told me he was gonna build a small hall, because he's so tied up with the five acres. A week later, it's up for sale.
Right. Well, again, the information changed, the, the lot next to him went for sale for a hundred and sixty thousand.
Next to him, it was for sale when he bought that.
And here's the thing, the information has changed since eight months ago, when they came here and talked to us about protecting that, the turn-in to Kay's Drive for the million-dollar homes, and we went out of a limb, on a limb, and got excoriated for putting out the twenty, saying, we would back the twenty grand so they could to, to buy it. So, and three days later, two days later, but the next day that they didn't buy it, he bought it.
But just, all I'm saying is, things, things are fluid, they change all the time.
So it's a key though.
Right, you think he's the only one that changes?
It's a two-way street here, he changes, we change.
But the problem is the tail's dragging the dog, and we gotta change that.
Well, you've got a rule that's been in place for a long time.
Right.
He submitted something, David's already issued his concerns, Tony has interviewed it, so when he does, he'll issue his concerns. That'll be relayed back to Steve. If he can't address those, then we're going to come in with a recommendation that it not be approved.
And for clarification, he proposed, what happened is, the board, much more guessing, if the board determines that the provisions of the rules, the transfer rule, have been fully satisfied, then it shall approve the request to transfer ERCs absent any compelling reason to the contrary. My comment about modification, that's what I propose to be in the new rules, that's, that's the criteria as it stands right now.
And one of those rules, Ray, and I don't know if you're right or not, but the, if he's not the owner of record of both those parcels, then he can't apply under that provision that he's asked.
Yeah.
Here's the, okay, next part of our review.
Right.
Can I ask a question, and right now's the time to ask you, another one, right now, are you interrupting me again? Here's another question, okay, I, I seconded putting her as chair, what was I thinking, where's the opium? So listen, why is it that every single time, it's a sudden death, ten minutes before a meeting, just like the first time, when if you don't buy this land for five hundred grand, pig farm's gonna go in, section eight housing's gonna go in, eh, and then two days later, oh, I bought it. And then, there's been other instances where it's sudden death, we don't have time to look at this stuff. How do we change that, can we, can we make, can I make a motion that if we don't have it by seven days before a meeting, it goes to the next meeting? So we have time to read it?
It all depends on what is, is on the plate.
Oh, again, Jane?
Right now, we're not reacting that way anymore. If we extend this meeting, it's because we need more time.
Right.
Okay.
So we are doing that.
Let's, can we
Right, yeah, let's go.
Be done with this?
Yeah.
Let's go.
So where are we gonna extend it to?
Oh, no, wait, that's at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, what's next?
Okay, uh, the mosquitoes, and just wanted to officially let you know that, uh, I need my notes. Basically, right now, we, we dropped down to two days a week, and that's, we've, I believe, Chad was gonna stop it, because they were getting a lot of count, but I had at least one supervisor say that there's still bats, and so we proceeded to extend it.
Yeah.
He did two things, one was he reduced the spraying, and this was this month, to two days a week, as opposed to three, and then he cut the intensity of the spraying down from, it's one, two, or three, three being the highest, and he cut it down to one.
We're almost out of material too.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, so what his plan is, is still do the counts, but he's planning on, uh, at the end of the month, stopping. I, and that's one of the questions, you guys want him to stop if he's below, I mean, council's just going out and sticking your, I don't know.
Or could COVID really back, worse than it's ever been, not his fault, but this time of year.
Well, I, I got, I got a lady standing in the road stopping me from spraying and asking me what I'm doing.
Okay, well
I told her to go talk to you.
Yeah, have her come talk to me, I probably know who it is.
Well, we have literally stood in front of me, I had to get out.
Okay, she's the president, her husband says it's bad, it's bad, it's, for this time of year, usually there's no mosquito.
At what intensity, do you wanna leave it up to the contractor, to go back to a three and maybe three days a week?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, you're giving all of our budget material, we can enjoy it quite good.
I, I think we leave it up to him, he's the professional, and he does the count.
Yeah, we were gonna, well, again, like, at my house, I had nothing.
Right, so
But then I walked down the street, oh, man, I'm getting bit, I was walking the dog in the sidewalk.
I mean, they are attracted to some people more than others, I mean, there's no question of that.
Stop breathing that carbon
I just, I just don't know what to do, the other day, at the, on the other side, they were
Oh, yeah.
Taking pictures of me.
Gonna catch you.
Of you?
Yeah, well, life spray one day a week for him.
Oh, uh-huh.
They're too close to him.
Uh, uh, yeah, so, you know, that really irritates me, but, you know.
That's people.
I mean, I don't wanna overdo it, I don't want, you know, if it's, it's
I turned it up as a good thought.
Tried that too.
I mean, they stand there while I'm spraying, so I don't, I don't get it.
Yeah.
It's not gonna hurt anybody anyway, it's, you know, it's, but
We do have a part coming down, their main person, and they're gonna get with Chad, and they're gonna go through the machine, calibrate it, and see what they can do about the remote control from inside the cab, but right now, it, that's
Yeah. I gotta, need a, need a remote
Can I ask a question on this, please? At one of the last meetings, it was discussed and agreed upon that you were gonna turn over the mosquito spray in here to
It won't be to the end of twenty
It's up to them.
It's not up to them.
That's gonna happen.
I've got an update on that.
I was gonna ask for that.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's an expansion of their area, and it has to go through the channels, and he's gonna give you an update on that now.
Great, uh, so now, is, uh, after Patrick and his team was here, and they made the presentation, it was approved by the county, and then they had to take it to the state to get that bill written to expand the district. They received a lot of negative public comment, and so the county, uh, they basically, uh, or, or the commissioners, they withdrew that, that resolution. So, yesterday, and I haven't heard yet, but yesterday, a revised petition or request for expansions was before the county commission, I, I don't know how that went. Uh, Patrick said he'd let me know, and then, uh, once they get that, they'll take it up, they're still looking at the same timeframe, you know, probably October, when COI would be included.
Yeah.
In the article I read, it said that they had changed some of the, the areas that were going to be included.
Right.
Did we, were we excluded from that, or did, were we still, we're still included, okay?
Well, Castro told me that it was, it's just the, the federal lands, like Rookery Bay, that don't want it. But he told me specifically, we were still included.
Yeah.
And Patrick said
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, and as far as spraying, we're continuing with three days a week, and the intensity would be at Chad's, you know
You're not, you're not gonna make it to the end of the month in three days a week unless that shows up.
Uh, it might be here this weekend, it's already been ordered, so
It's all the shit.
I mean, the rain stops, that makes a big difference, but who knows when that's gonna happen.
Cooler nights too, but that's what's not, uh, due to the time, uh, can we just put the field report? If anyone has something, send me an email, and we'll get it, uh, get it answered.
I got another invoice question.
Okay.
Put them, and invoices today, see. Um, we bill ourselves for our irrigation water, how does that work out?
Uh, okay.
I mean, how do we pay, we take it from here and put it where, is it
We actually put a check.
Yeah.
So we
Why?
Does she have the record of what you said?
Auditor saying we should do
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you gotta charge yourself.
You can't just blend it.
You gotta charge yourself for what you use.
I answered that question first before the board.
Yeah, and it, it, uh, for, you can order your irrigation needs, I wanna say about fifteen bucks a year.
Yeah, and you have to know what the costs are.
Right.
You have to know what the cost are, you, you take money from here and put it back here.
Makes a difference, yeah.
It becomes a bill, the check
It does cost you
It costs me to do the paperwork and the paper, that's what it costs.
No, it's a cost to
Yeah. I'm paid for that.
Yeah, it just seems like if you could eliminate it, it would be worth it.
Okay, um, so, is that good to move on then?
Yes.
Okay, uh, on the Kay's Drive landscaping, the light repairs, the boring's been completed, and, uh, they're supposed to come back Monday to, uh, make the connection for the electrical. And that was for the landscape lights at Kay's Drive, and then, uh, the monument painting, we did get another repair painting, I mean, that's caulking, tower washing, everything, twenty-one hundred dollars from Marco Island Painting, but that would depend on what Tony comes up with as far as an agreement.
I thought we were gonna have Chris do it or something.
Yeah, that's, Chris gave
Twenty-one hundred?
Well, and they're not set up to do it.
Yeah.
Can I, I mean, we could have him try it and, and bill you for the expensive, I mean, he's, like, the cheaper, I, I don't know, but, you know, Chris would have got the price and
But we're also gonna discuss the monument.
Yeah, we might, yeah, we might, why don't we do anything in the monument, so he knows who, whose it is or if it stays there.
Are those monuments on, on Steve's land, the old walls, and there are no easements?
Right.
Correct. So he can knock them down if he wants.
Correct.
Okay.
That's why we have Kay's Drive Monument License Agreement.
I haven't, I haven't, I did not find any easements in the district's favor, and when we get to that conversation, I think, I don't know if y'all saw the sketch, and surveyed the date, but identified
Let's go say you can look at the flags that are out there right now.
The flag is right there. You can see this.
Let's face it, the survey Steve did, it paid for.
Correct.
So this painting thing is put off till we decide on license.
Right, till we get some license, you know, maintain those monuments.
Yeah.
So you're gonna find out if you're gonna bulldoze it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That takes us up to attorney.
Prep back, same status, on hold, until we all decide we've had an impasse and settlement discussion, that was the agreement that filing, so nothing more is taking place on that, uh, since the last time we had a meeting with the various parties. On the Kay's Drive Monument License Agreement, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I thought it would be in front of you, it's not.
No.
I didn't see it in the package.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I did, I sent it out on, maybe, not that made you tend to pack it, it went out on the fifteenth, that's how it lines, by time it drafted it.
I thought there were still questions, and it's still being worked on, I didn't
Well, I wonder, I think, one of the questions was whether or not to be any compensation, I think that was Steve's question, or credit for assessment.
Okay. Thought we had submission to the license agreement.
The text, I'm not sure, I don't recall that, but what we could do is continue that item along with the
I was gonna take that too.
I agree.
I mean, the board has the
Yes.
Discussion drawing, because, again, from the survey that was provided, I, uh, used my Adobe Pro skills, which are limited, to, uh, to identify, this is, these are, this is where the walls are located, yeah, and it's within this property and outside, and these are reflected on the survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tony, I sent a couple of little small comments back to you, I think we, you identified three sides, but there's actually four, and there was a little typo in the license agreements.
Okay. Well, I sent you my comments.
Well, there's a sign, but just so it's, I think it's a stop sign, well, anyway, we'll argue with Dave, I'm sure y'all have it for the continued meeting.
Okay.
As well as Steve's comment.
Do we have to list what we're gonna have in the continuing meeting?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, we need to make sure that we do B two, that
Correct.
Painting update will be continued also.
Yes.
Once we get the other stack.
Once we get the other, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, that takes us.
Oh, just real briefly, not on my report, but I, David Weeks at Teyer County, who's management section, and David's been there since Steiners has run the earth yet.
Yeah.
And which is great because that's part of the history and continuity down there, which is not a lot of it, quite frankly, anymore. But he provided me a copy of the July second, nineteen eighty-five agreement between the Port of the Islands and that Department of Community Affairs, which is now the Department of Economic Opportunity with regards to the Port of the Islands development. And one that's important is anytime it's referencing the county's conference of plan, the development is subject to any resiling changes or subject to review by DEO now. Say no objection. They had done that twice in the past. So Dave was, y'all want copies of it? I can have copies next quarter. What's interesting, this is twenty-eighty-five, it shows the ski range, filled land, access road, laundry restrooms, stables.
Yeah, stables.
Yeah.
Muta Ranch.
Stable, yeah.
Track. I wrote here.
Yeah, the campground, the sewage treatment plant, Legume is right next to the canal.
Yeah. There's a big laundry room, too.
Yeah, so I think there was another, yeah, there's a, there's a canal, there's a sewage plant.
Yeah.
And there's a trailer park and pond.
And actually where track A and B is, if you look at the very bottom of that one drawing, I think it shows the C one down there.
It's the top.
So it went way back to, you may contemplate it being commercial.
So I think this, we'll have all this account, if you can, they put that right. When I, we sent along the license agreement draft and.
Okay. So that'll be on the next agenda.
Well, it's just for information, ready board order, lots that they can have. David, again, is a good guy, really, I bet he's still there. And he had to go back on his way back machine to dig that stuff up. Thank you.
Way back.
Yeah.
I just work in there, right?
Yeah, let's go on.
You have a letter of interest from Scott Preppin, who was here, and so he asked me, should he send this to the realtor or should he, you know, do you want to avoid the realtor's fees? And I said, you gotta bring it to the board.
Again, I went to you and I went to Tony and they went, he went to the state. So I am recusing myself from any discussions or votes that have to do with Scott from here on.
Yeah, and part of that, Mr. Jensen, I appreciate you had two conversations, Mr. Jensen, and also I had a conversation with one of the in-house attorneys, Commission on Ethics, who brought some ethics opinions. Again, the Ethics Commission is the only entity that can ultimately provide opinions on the chapter one twelve, Code of Ethics for Public Officials. And I look at their guidance and chat with them and I look, and I take a conservative approach, and I think that's appropriate approach, is this Mr. Jensen to my conversations? And what the steps are, that prior to any vote being taken on an item where Scott Preppin is involved in a transaction, and in this case, in this real estate case, the litigation, I think, is different. Just, we'll just stick to the transaction. Mr. Jensen will publicly state to the assembly the nature of his interest and the measure on which he is abstaining, as I understand it, and if you can confirm it, Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen is a sale, license sales, real estate sales associate in the state of Florida. And he hangs perhaps his license with Port of the Islands Realty LLC and that brokerage operation. Mr. Preppin is also a licensed real estate sales associate in the state of Florida. And Mr. Preppin has his license with Port of the Island Realty LLC. And to the extent that Port of the Island Realty LLC would get part of a commission because of Mr. Preppin being involved in a transaction, then Port of the Island Realty LLC, which under the Code of Ethics, is a principle by which Mr. Jensen's retained or what Mr. Jensen has a contractual relationship would benefit. And so there's two possible parts of the voting conflict law. It would inure to the benefit of a principal by whom he is retained or could be a conflicting contractual relationship. And so, Mr. Jensen, here is the fabulous Form eight B that you need to file within fifteen business days with CALE.
I've brought it.
Okay, you got another one?
But you only have to do it if there's an actual vote, right?
Well, no, they're voting to, and I'd say anything dealing with this matter, voting to whether forward it on to the realtor or not, so any action involving that, where Mr. Preppin is involved.
All right.
So if the board takes action on that, send that to the realtor, then Mr.
But if the board doesn't take action?
But what's going to happen with the LOI then?
It's turned down.
Then it's board action.
Right.
And so then, then Mr. Jensen can't, cannot participate on it.
Participate or vote?
Can't do either. No.
Okay.
There are some, and talking with the attorney for the Commission on Ethics, there are some instances where a person may be able to participate. This doesn't seem to fall within, and secondly, when you start to get close to that line, then, and I think Mr. Jensen also takes the approach of not even coming close to the line. And I appreciate that conservative approach on his behalf. And that's always my guidance to completely abstain from voting and or participating in any discussion. Concur, Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, in short, if somebody, somewhere down the road said this looks fishy, I don't need that. So I'm out on these.
I'm gonna. I do appreciate the conversations and the candor.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate your help.
So what do you guys want to do with this? Do you want Scott to make a presentation? Do you want to tell them both who your realtor?
I feel what's happened in the past. I mean, it started with getting a commercial appraisal. So we, we did that and then it was also get a commercial realtor. And I feel we were coming here today to finalize that so that we have done what at that time the community wanted. The, this proposal, I think, is a long time coming. It has been up before that the interest in the land, that nothing was ever produced or put forward to us. And I think it's, it's time we gotta move on. I think we should go with the commercial real estate, sign the contract as we had, that was our plans as of last month. So any comments?
Yeah, I got it. Of course, I've always been and have been a supporter of the RB part only because I've just, I've always felt like that was the way to go for that area in the back. I understand exactly what you're saying and I agree with that. Is there any way that we can allow legally, allow, my, his ears broke up over there, legally allow Scott to go forward with this without going to the realtor? I understand, though, that when it comes to doing his due diligence, that there is going to be expense on his part and I'm sure he's not going to want to expense money when there's no guarantee that we would sell it to him, but or that we didn't get a better offer down the road. You know, somebody comes along and goes, I'll give you five million dollars for it. Well, one point eight seven five is, you know, five million looks a lot better. Is there any way that we can do that legally?
I guess there's two considerations for the board. One is, since you don't, do not yet have a signed agreement with Land Class, I don't think that is an consideration for them, maybe they can try to, but I don't think it is. But secondly, I would not recommend that this LOI is drafted, be accepted by the board. It is just like, it's just like the Zeman one and it has.
It's up for ninety days.
No, three hundred and sixty thousand.
No, and it also requires a result, and so there's no step up, and it's just like the original Zeman transaction, the LOI. So I know you didn't ask for my advice on that, but I would recommend not signing this LOI.
I would recommend, though, that we, we do like we did with Zeman, which was, we said, we're not gonna take your LOI, but we're going to turn you over to Tony who will then negotiate a, you know, with some sort of step up, something that's beneficial to everyone.
You have that right to do that, but I think what would happen is the broker would say, I'm not interested. Do you need to come everywhere? You go through the process and saw like the good faith credibility, you can't think I'm wrong.
No, I know.
The broker's gonna say, oh, wait a minute, you guys did this and now you're in a contract, so if this contract falls, I probably don't get one with.
Right.
Besides paying Louisville Title, and it says S and E, that's not a whole story. Because Louisville Title is not a developer, they're a title company, I checked out their website. But the, if you were to go ahead and negotiate a purchase being with Louisville Title, hold off with Land Class, then Land Class may say, why should I ever probably come back to this board? If this deal doesn't get signed or if this deal goes south. I'm just saying, it's one of those, a reputation gets developed in the community, especially real estate community, can't disagree or nothing.
No, I know. I agree with you.
That's my concern.
I had a call yesterday from another developer, National Development of RB, said they had an interest.
Yeah.
And I said, well, let's, there is an LOI that's before the board now, and there's also a real estate agreement and you're probably going to have to go through the real estate company, but I'll tell you what happens. At working, at working.
Well, as I said, I do agree with you. I mean, we set this up and we said we were gonna do this, this, and this. Well, it's time to do that, that, and that. Let's do it.
So I would have a motion to not accept this and to move forward with the real estate agreement.
Well, second. So then Scott can just go through the real estate.
Really, he wants to, yeah.
You take your, call the question against her. What's that?
We have to spell it out.
On favor.
I.
All right. More abstention, Mr. Jensen. Correct. Go ahead.
No, you're abstaining. I'm abstaining.
Yep.
First time I've seen him so calm.
Well, that's why.
I wish I could always say that about you.
I mean, he's still in the mix. He can still do. That is if we have a listing agreement in place.
And when I first saw this sign, he had no problem with going through the realtor. He just wanted to know what was the process and, you know, if you guys accepted this, I'll cite the agreement. Say something.
Is the realtor here, Mark? What's it supposed to be here?
Oh, Mark, are you here? No, but he did agree with the, the terms that.
Agreement?
In the real estate agreement.
Okay.
So we saw, we had the chairman sign the real estate agreement with Land Class. Listing.
It's amended in.
That's amended.
Correct.
All in favor?
I.
Zach, can we get updates from them, like monthly? What kind of activity they're getting?
Zach, did we put it in the agreement?
Yeah.
Good, good. Okay, good. I like that idea.
We can't afford to waste time on this thing anymore.
Right. So as far as how to proceed, I think we've already established.
Right.
And then the rules change updates. Tony, I, we sent out to you, I mean, it's a lot of pages. We didn't put it in print, which you have a copy of it electronically. The language revisions in the agreement. And I guess we need to set a public hearing.
Well, I guess first of all, though, I want, yeah, you can first get some input as to what we provide, whether or not what we have is, it's initial drafts. I'll be to the board saying, okay, this is enough to go to the public hearing. I don't want to set a public hearing that has substantial changes made unless, I don't know if you're ready to do that today. It'll take a couple hours to go through. We could just, once I, it's like reading war piece. No mishmash, I think. Yeah.
Or mishmash.
That's my inspiration for that.
It's good, good time reading.
Yeah.
We can't set the public hearing, but then work on this scale between then. We'll have another board meeting and work on.
Yeah.
The text.
Okay.
I was suggesting we set the public hearing in January. That way we can work on this in December and we find it for January. And one, one item that's not, a couple items, just as a boil though, I have not yet inserted all the statutory authority for various subsections. Like in chapter one ninety or chapter one twenty, or I took those out because since it's wholesale rewrite.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna go back in later on. And but then, I guess, just conceptually, if they all okay with the, I'll call it the structure where I rearranged, took some sections out. I tried to put some in order, like the cross connection is a standalone and do some other stuff, continuity. Jennifer will have the schedule, so the great speech charter, that'll be a standalone document, I thought that.
Wait, and she's, you've got her.
Yes. Yeah, so I, I think it'd be okay to set the public hearing for the normal meeting in January, like get the notice out there. And then if the next regular meeting in December, we can refine, we'll have additional comments on this as to how I crafted or drafted, if I missed anything.
Didn't we hire this guy and isn't it gonna be up to him? Am I wrong about that? But I mean, we hired the guy, right? And so aren't we gonna have to figure out when he can do it?
The rules won't.
His assessment methodology is different. That, that, I would suggest is going to be a different public hearing and a different notice report. Do you advise the methodology?
Okay.
That's an O and M assessment methodology.
Well, we, if you want to have that public hearing in January, you'll, you'll be ready.
I mean, I'm just thinking, why not, right?
Well, this other Russell that's gonna do this methodology. Is he, what if he came back and he said you should eliminate your, the way you do it and just run like the counter does with impact fees and water rates? What has that effect with?
I don't think he's doing the utility.
Not doing that.
He's doing O and M, that's it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No change in the.
We never, we never would change the.
He's not doing the utility.
I thought he was putting it the whole assessment process. So we would have a fixed assessment methodology, so we would know what's what.
But, yeah, the methodology for the O and M would be one other document, standalone report. And the transfer of BRC to the extent involves that methodology, we could put that methodology for what the allocations are. But I don't think, I think you can have it at the same time.
Okay. So January.
This is kind of a lot of dough just for the O and M, though, isn't it? Seventy-five hundred bucks?
What's that?
This is a lot of money just for the O and M. How hard can it be?
It's as cheap as like, fine, I've worked with them. Most of the firms want it fifteen to.
Thirty thousand or thirty, yeah.
This ought to increase.
Looks a barsey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll move that we have the public meeting for January.
Twenty-first. January twenty-first?
Twenty-first. And all the rules change.
Should we, should we set it for later in the meeting, like eleven-thirty and thereafter, so people aren't.
Yeah, good idea.
Or probably two o'clock.
After lunch.
Have them bring dinner.
But then in the note, the condition to speak is you bring snacks.
There you go.
I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'm just gonna say eleven.
Okay.
So that motion was by Sam. You have to set the public hearing on rulemaking for January twenty-first at eleven-thirty.
And what about the methodology?
The methodology, you want to do that at eleven?
What, okay, or would you want him to see you drafted that first, though?
Yeah.
I, I think.
You'll have the draft done. You can set the public hearing in summer meeting.
Okay.
True.
Maybe.
You have a chance to review it at that time, good.
Somebody needs a second.
Somebody needs a second.
I'll second.
On favor.
I.
And if any of you former has any individual questions about this draft, please feel free to give me a call. I know it was kind of hard to follow because of the formatting restrictions. That's why sometimes reading the clean version just kind of.
If you follow this, I ask.
Okay. That was the chair, the soon to be new chair, a three-point shot right there.
The thirty's without a BRC methodology report on the O and M that we'll have after the draft or the next meeting.
Okay.
Anything else? So we're going to, who's in charge? Are you talking about online meetings?
Oh, yes, the online meetings, right.
Whether you can.
Whether you can keep it, archive it?
Oh, no, 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 this is behind the audio. We have the, well, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, you figured out a way to put the audios from the go-to-meetings on, online with the access, correct?
Yeah, the, the current go-to-meetings meetings are linked to the POI website under meetings and agendas. Uh, but, they're only there for a year, because they're hosted by go-to-meetings, so, then, you know, last November's meeting will have fallen off by now. So, you've got a year's worth on the POI website.
All right, but if people.
If you wanted to have.
If people still wanted that information, we can still provide it, but it won't be on the website.
That's correct. We could either do it like a normal records request, and, you know, put it on a, in a Dropbox, or put it on a thumb drive. Um, another possibility, which we saw another district do, is to put them up on YouTube. Um, that's a little more work, but they're permanent. Um, and the issues, the only issues with that are that the compression isn't as good, so there might be some reduction in quality, and there's commercials, but it's free.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, free. It's free.
Free with commercials.
And this is just audio, correct? Not?
No.
No, it's everything.
It is audio and video, good.
I like that, that's less work for the office. People could do it on their own.
And it's way more accessible. They just go to YouTube.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, what they can get off on the website is of, is of better quality than what they'll get on YouTube.
So, what we'll do is, in, on the CID website, we'll have a link that says, last meeting. Or whatever, last meeting, and you click that, it will take you to the go-to-meeting website where that is, and you can then watch it, correct?
Is that what you are anticipating, correct?
That is, well, that's the current situation. It's already there, and it takes you to the go-to-meetings website, but only for meetings for one calendar year.
Right.
So, if we wanted to, if you want us to do the, the YouTube thing, then I would put another link there that says, I would get rid of the go-to-meetings links, and just put up a link to YouTube page, and it would take you to YouTube, and you would have all of your meetings there. In perpetuity. I'm sorry, what?
What is easier for you? To just do it all YouTube?
I mean, I mean, once, it, it's probably, you know, one way or the other, it's, it's, it's not more work.
I think it's easier for the community to go to YouTube.
Yeah, the community, it might be easier just to go to one place, YouTube, click on YouTube.
Most people know how to get there, so, whereas us, they gotta look up the website.
Yeah, plus one other aspect, when it's on our website, it needs to be ADA compliant.
Right.
So, you have to make sure the format is such that.
So, I think we should go straight YouTube.
Yeah.
Would be my suggestion.
Well, and just to that one point, it's not on our website. We're, even with, as it currently is, it's linking to another website to go to meetings, so, it's like to go to meetings to provide ADA requirements.
So, now it would link to YouTube?
Sounds good.
So, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's, it's just, we'll link to YouTube, and you'll have all of your meetings instead of just one year's work.
YouTube.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
That's good.
Uh, Chris, we have in the packet, audio equipment for here, because we've mentioned that you still wanted to consider that. It did find a little less expensive of an option, uh, but it's still pricey. So, Chris, anything to add to that?
No, I, I just recalled that, I think it was Supervisor LaShir who said, hey, let's get a professional audio engineer here to say what it would be to, to wire up that meeting room. Uh, so, I talked to Gamma Tech down in Naples, and this is sort of the basic setup, you know, mics in front of each supervisor, one for the audience, plus a handheld mic, speakers in the ceiling, a mixing board, a rack in, like, server closet that he, that he saw back there. And, all that's twenty-something, twenty thousand dollars to do. Um, if you're interested in going forward with something like this, Jesse can be present, uh, like, at another meeting to customize it, or talk about it, or we can see if there are other options, other providers, but I think this is sort of a benchmark price to do something like that.
Well, number one, we don't own, so, you know, with a mixer and the whole nine yards, I think what we're thinking of is a speaker for each of us, so that, you know, that it goes, we don't need to have speakers in the ceiling, but just so that the, the audio was better for the recording, so that it doesn't get lost.
A microphone for each of us.
Yeah.
Or if any of you.
Yeah.
Actually, aren't these working now, though?
Yeah.
I mean, we've already improved. I don't, I don't.
Well, if, if they think this is, if it turns out this is good enough, then let's go with that.
And the microphones would allow the people back there to hear.
Yeah.
But as far as for the reporting, we're set.
I, I've always felt like the best thing to do is have a microphone on a stand right there, and you come up, give your name, where you live, and give, and call. So, if we can get that, so that, you know, instead of having a handheld, but just a, you know, a stand with a, with the microphone on it, and that's where, you know, if you want to speak to us.
An amplifier or something to project at.
Yeah, but we have, we have it here. Didn't we use it here before?
Yeah, that's, is something that the, the, the Orchid Cove set up, provided it, and, you know, I guess we could leave it here, and then, you know, I'm not the best. So.
Well, they said we can use it. I mean, so.
Somebody just has to set it off.
Right. Yeah, we'll find somebody.
Okay.
But that way, you know, yeah, as I said, it's, I think it's always better to have people identified themselves.
Sure.
So, that we know who's talking.
Well, if you can call, because, you know, the unit is back in the box, and you had the microphones up here, but, you know, it didn't really seem to project any sound.
I'm not remembering it that way. Let's go to another try.
Sure.
How many people watching it right now, besides your staff?
Uh, two.
Two, okay.
They're all here today.
Yep, good.
Nice.
Yep.
Somebody was nice enough to put that next door.
Oh, here we go.
We'll let it stay.
Try not to pat yourself on the back.
Good.
Was I talking too much?
Somebody else, too, uh, that, you know, is not there now, but right now, there's two people beside us, Chris, that's, yeah.
Okay.
So, but if you want a speaker for every board member, then, you know, we need an amplifier of some sort.
And a mixer.
And a mixer.
Yeah, so, no. That's too much money.
Okay, so, just looking at, we'll see if Brady will set this up again, and I, I don't know if we can bring the, the amplifier, the speaker out, but if we do that, that's good. I mean, it didn't work very well, but we can try it again.
Okay. Let's give it another shot.
Okay, I think the important thing is to make sure we had the video, so that people can get it, and they can address that.
Right, the YouTube. Yeah, that'll help the nighttime.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
This, discussion.
Audience.
The sale of the water wastewater facilities, we threw some lines out, and nobody's jumped out, and we'll keep doing it as long.
What do you mean, you threw lines out?
Well, we just kind of mentioned it, some people said, is there, if there's any interest, and.
I thought they already told us before that they had no interest in taking it.
Uh. We haven't really gotten into it, but just so you know, right now, if you read in the paper, they're redistricting Everglade City, which is unincorporated Collier. Shokolowski's incorporated everything around it, but Sammy Hamilton never allowed Everglade City, that has the huge problem, to be incorporated. So, they're doing that right now, and they're deciding if it's gonna be in Locastro's district, or some guy named Daniel's district, which I doubt. So, until that happens, we can't even approach it, if you want to approach it.
It's in Daniel's district right now.
Yeah, so, there's some discussion about changing it.
Well, and, you know, financially, obviously, there might be some advantages there, but individually, the, what I've seen where they've been turned around, and Gateway being one of them, is that for the residents, it's more expensive. Uh, the other thing is you lose total control over what can go in there, and what can't. And if you guys remember, I know Ray remembers, that when we were gonna bring the, uh, some of the, the water that wasn't, you know, is reject water from Everglade City into here, uh, there was a big uproar.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages. The biggest advantage would be, if you got rid of it, you've reduced your, sure, your, seven, what, seventy-seven percent of.
Of the non-avalorum.
Of our non-avalorum is for wastewater, uh, and, and, you know, maintenance, and if you look at the CIP, how much, probably seventy-five percent of that is the maintenance of the other, you know? And if you eliminate that, then there becomes less of a need for us to sell the fifty acres in the back, because we no longer need the revenue stream from that like we do, if we're going to end up keeping it. That's why I said it. So, if we have discussion with the county, and they say, no way, we're never gonna take it over, da-da-da-da-da-da, then we know how to plan, which is, we're going to have to sell the back lot and develop a revenue stream from it. If, on the other hand, the county says, hmm, we might be interested in doing that as we go through this with Everglade City, it, it becomes a, a question of, you know, yes, we do lose control over it, but on the other hand, we also lose a major headache.
Yeah, true. And expense.
And expense.
It can't possibly cost more.
One of the aspects of the transaction, I was involved with one gateway, that was a ten-year dance, or seven-year dance. It started off with the city approaching, and then the city and county approached Gateway, and then the city dropped off because of its financial, but Lee County ultimately came to the table, because the Gateway plant was in, by the airport. And this county was having difficulty acquiring sufficient land, and zoning it for a wastewater treatment plant. The Gateway Services District had a forty-seven acre site with an existing one million gallon per day plant on it, and wells, water wells, and storage tanks for treated up waste. And the, the deal was, the, after the dance, we worked out, there are a number of documents, there's statutory requirements they have to go through, about income statements, and conditions, and what's the benefit. I'm looking at the statute now. Counties do it, cities do it, and the CEDs have to do it. And Gateway sold the plant, uh, and got some money, and also had rates locked in for a certain period of time, to plot a certain amount of capacity in the plant. And the Gateway Services District, they'll kept the collection system for the sewers, and the distribution system for the lines. So, the, the county has sewer plant, higher county has a water reclamation facility.
It's a nice thing.
Yeah, the gurgling sounds of the babbling.
Exactly.
Goes through, uh, but, uh, in the county, in the district, Gateway has a bulk purchase water agreement for the potable water from the county. So, I mean, there, and, so the district still collects the revenue used from the operations, the enterprise fund, but they don't have the cost of operating the plant per se, and the permit for operating the plant. And who's pluses and minuses, every community's different, like you all said.
Who's liable for the infrastructure repair?
Well, the, the main mains, forest mains, and the distribution is the CED, they own it. They own the distribution for the water, and the question for the sewer, the listations, but the plant itself is Lee County's responsibility. The potable water delivery is Lee County's responsibility. The district has some wells they use to blend with the FRO, and the district gets all the treated up water plant irrigation.
So, this plant is seventy-seven percent of the non-avalorum. On a condo at Orchid Cove, that's two thousand and fifty dollars. So, if you subtract seventy-seven percent from two thousand and fifty dollars a year, there's no way in hell it's gonna cost you as much money. It can't. And the cost of it is amortized over the entire county. Not just.
Not necessarily.
It's the district.
Yeah.
It's like your. So, like district one. Here, your school district, and your fire district.
It's not even that.
So, it's still gonna be less.
I look at, I look at our fire district. You think it's gonna be, you think it's gonna be fair and equitable, when we pay three times what everybody else pays for fire? It's not gonna be fair and equitable.
You don't know until you try.
Oh, my God.
You don't know unless you talk to them.
Again, it's a multi-year dance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to start the dance.
Yeah.
Everybody has to play the music.
Okay, but, then we have to reconsider listing the property back there. I mean, if you think you're gonna not need to sell it, that's what you just said.
It's gonna take too long. You gotta sell the property, am I right?
Yeah, I think you have to sell the property.
I mean, just today, this is what kills me. Just today, we talked about a million and a half dollars. Just today, well, we need to do this, we really should. We've been putting it off for six months, six years. A million and a half, just today. And we haven't discussed yet the CIP report. We've been putting it off since May, when he gave it to us. We have not discussed it. It's seven million dollars. At some point, guess what?
It comes due.
Orchid Cove Tuesday told us, our fees are going up eight hundred and sixty bucks, January first.
I would move.
Yeah. You rich people don't care. So, that's what's gonna happen. We're gonna hit a brick wall.
Well, it's, we are moving forward, though. That's why we shouldn't put off the sale of that land.
No.
You know, we gotta do something to get, get it in our hands.
It's, which would happen first.
With the county and the water, there was a meeting the other night in the community, and I think they discussed, I think, three people going down to the commissioner to discuss about taking over our water plant. So, it's like, everybody's working on something, and I don't know if all the information comes back to us or not.
But the biggest deal is the county, we want to see a need that the county has, or, or an overwhelming clamor.
Didn't we look at this a few years ago? We looked into this, and the county said.
They weren't interested.
Yeah, not really.
Right.
Let's get official, they're not interested.
Well, I think we did it.
The gateway was different, because Lee County needed a plant out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The county's gonna need one, too, with Everglade City.
There you go. I see exactly why it's the time to talk to them.
I mean, they're, they're gonna be here anyway, with staffing and everything else.
County, County has embarked on this incredible program, you know, if you go down Livingston Road the last couple years, is huge.
Oh, yeah.
Tubes, what they're doing, they're connecting all the wastewater treatment plants, all the breach holes, uh, to provide redundancy. I mean, those.
Here can.
Those big ones, they're going down like thirty feet, I mean, they're, they're, yeah, and so they're interconnected in North Tyre one, off of, uh.
Yeah, they could do the same thing here.
With the, one of them lately, with, I mean, they're connecting all of them for redundancy.
So, what would be at, Lee County, where Gateway is, they had a small package plant like what we've got now. Now, they've got this monstrous.
Things like three million now. It wasn't a million before, I think it's.
Yeah, a million, they tripled the size. I mean, it's, it's a huge plant, and, uh, I, I'm not sure the, the community's gonna wanna look at that. All right, it's huge.
But that one there is talking about it.
Well, then again, but you don't know that they'd come and, and increase the size of ours, you know, I mean, we're already, we already have, we're, what, running at sixty percent, I think we said, we talked about today.
During season, you can't take it, the Everglade City is not expanding.
Yeah, no, 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 Everglade City is a fifty-five million dollar plant.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And that's what the EDA said.
And Everglade City is actually getting sewage from, uh, Poplin and those areas.
Right.
So, it's, it is serving its regional facility.
Everglade City's only four hundred homes, and it's, but it's in the Everglades, three, four years ago, it was fifty-five million to put the plant in. What is it now?
It's called small water.
And who's gonna pay for it?
As I said, I think we, it doesn't hurt to, to start the dance, and send out some feelers to Locastro and all the other ones, that we would like to find out. Because like I said, if they come back and say, there was a definite no way, Jose, okay, we have to plan ourselves to take care of this. If, on the other hand, they say there is a way that we might be able to do this, then we need to, we need to go down that avenue. Doesn't mean we make that commitment, but we certainly ought to know that the avenue's open, rather than, there's a, there's a, you know, roadblock.
There, there's a couple of different options for the county, if they would even consider it. One would be to keep the facility as it is, maybe even expand it, take it in other areas. They could even look at putting a major pumping station there, and pump the sewage to their other facilities. Again, if they look at the water side of it, again, do they keep the water plant here, or do they replace it and run a pipeline?
Again, if they look at the water side of it, again, do they keep the water plant here, or do they replace it and run a pipeline to here? Uh, so there's lots of options for the county if they would even wanna think about restoring it.
And there, and the county at the present time is looking at, my understanding, all this, um, the treatment plants around there, looking at a comprehensive plan to redo it, is what I read. Correct?
I'm not so sure as far as redoing it, but adding, adding the redundancy, ability to pump, uh, you know, shed flows, one plant to the other.
Upgrading is, I was a better term.
Right.
Upgrading what they have existing here.
Right, and, and they, they have had on the board for probably twenty years a plant out by the fairgrounds. They're, they're orange tree utilities, they acquired the utilities up there. Correct, they, they've done some
They expanded out there too.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of, uh, bigger developments that are planned out in that area too to bring sewage into a new facility.
So anyway, I brought that up, and, you know, it's up to the board, but you know, do you wanna try to pursue this, or you just wanna let it go? You know, I, as I said, I personally think we oughta to try to walk down the road a little ways and see whether the road's blocked or not, because if it's, if it is, we'll, we'll let it block, and then it's up us.
And probably the best way to facilitate that may be going through the commissioner arrangement meeting with the utility.
Exactly.
And, and make a formal request.
Exactly. But, whatever.
And we can do that. I just think we should, I think we should look at it too, because, you know, it's gotta be less, it's gotta be less.
Well, and, and the county may look though at the community itself to bring things up to their standards before they will accept it entirely. Doing some of the C I P projects that need to be done to get it to where they want it.
Yep.
There may be some initial impacts to the community.
Right, but again, if we don't land
We won't know.
We won't know.
If you're recommending what you did in the, in the form that we should be putting away four hundred fifty-five thousand a year for the next seven years for what your engineering told us we're looking at for repairs and replacement, and we're not doing that, every year that, we're not doing that. And we can defer it, like it's been deferred for the last six years, and pretty much this year too, okay? We don't have it. We don't have it. And at some point, the pipe's gonna break, the bed's gonna break, and oh, guess what?
He did start this year.
Yeah, but not that much.
Was in your C I P.
Yeah.
That's four hundred thousand.
Right.
A new meeting.
Oh, the meeting.
That was
So we had to start.
And even if
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we're playing catch-up ball from six years.
You, you are even longer than that.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
And even when you accomplish what's listed in the C I P, that list continues on forever.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully not It never, it never goes away. Yeah, it's always ongoing, like maybe it's a house or a car.
And that means the expense is ongoing.
Yes.
Okay, well, I
I, I sat here and listened to everything and I'm against it, so, so you know, the, uh, anytime, uh, that, well, like he said, we've got a two-mile pipe, right, that's gonna cost a lot of money. First thing they do is they say, yeah, they bill us for the pipe because we're the district. They're not gonna spread the cost of that pipe throughout the community, they're just gonna bill us. You think it's gonna be different, it's not. It's gonna, it's not gonna be less, it would probably be more.
Yeah, a lot of people think the cost will be shared with all county residents, but no.
There is the potential too that they could imply the, uh, apply the same impact fees that they've got for utilities upon you as a new customer, right? But, and, and those are all things to be discussed. Yeah, part of, part of the transaction is a, it, it, the joint analysis is because both parties have to perform the same analysis. And part of the analysis is, again, the negotiation about what do you avoid sticker shock or rate shock by saying the C I D's rates, its customers' rates will be X for a certain period of time, so they remain stable, so they don't just jack up to the county rate, assuming the county's rates are substantially higher. And impact fees, they might be able to do similar, or at that point in time, there's a number of variations on that. I mean, uh, put in new conditions for buffering and landscaping and, and items such as that. And there's all kinds of ways to adjust. If you get that far down the road, but I would suggest it's here, it's always good to start. At least have the conversation, find out yea or nay.
That's, that's all I'm asking. I'm asking the
With the total of water.
Let's, 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 let's talk and find out where, where they stand.
They could motion. Should have, you know, there should be a court directive. So if you're suggesting making a motion to send Commissioner La Castro a letter to, you know, say that we might have an interest in selling.
And would, and be interested in, uh, any kind of, what, what'd you say a minute ago, the meeting was, oh, no, who's
Me with utilities.
Yeah.
Means you're scoring the interest of the county and your party, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Face to face. With him and them. After the redistricting, please, I'll second it. After the redistricting's done, that's December twenty-first.
Okay, uh, so you have a motion that was made to, uh, send a letter to, uh, Commissioner La Castro, requested a meeting with utilities and itself.
After work, after the, the C I D is into La Castro's district.
Yeah.
Be, be to the appropriate commissioner.
Yeah, he's, he's
He's our
Just to make sure.
Yeah.
We voting, all in favor?
This is just to find out about interest, right?
Yeah.
We have no obligation.
No obligation.
It's just a, as I said, somebody's got to start the music to play the dance.
Yeah.
If you wanna see the number of documents involved to get to the point yourself.
Oh, I'm sure.
Got boxes.
I'm sure it is. Anytime you be able to, uh, govern, state, local, or federal, it's, you know.
It's, it's gonna be a lot of work to, for us.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have a lot of expense involved. And if you, you know, I wanna make sure the board is serious about considering this.
All we're gonna do is meet with them first, that's free. Let's meet with them first, let's hear it from the horse's mouth. They might say, "We like you, we're gonna do it for nothing, who knows?"
And they may say, "Hell, hell no."
Yeah, exactly.
Again, what if they, one way or the other, we know which way we're
Then we know.
As a C I D.
Okay.
So all I know is on the fire district, they, uh, we're gonna be, become part of, uh, Greater Naples Fire District. But I think we're in our third year now, they keep renewing the inter-local agreement. Still hasn't happened.
The fire district's a whole different thing.
Well, it's the same thing.
It is, but it's the same idea.
It's Greater Naples and, and the county, two different things.
We are, we do pay more than
Oh, yeah, but it's because of Ochoapi.
But the, we were Ochoapi.
Right.
The agreement was that we would get in line with the rest of the county.
Yeah.
And now it's, you know, if you're paying one point seven, why do you wanna pay more to bring us down?
Right.
Wanna do it.
I, and I am.
We're only, but four.
Right.
We're four.
Three, seven, five. I just wanted to
Yeah, it's a
It's not the county.
I just paid my It was four.
But it's Greater Naples specifically.
Maybe it starts with a senior, it was just a
Uh, it went from three point seven to four.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to
Who's second?
Contact the commissioner.
Okay.
I second it.
I understand, I'm not You have to, you have to
I know, I have to call the vote now.
Oh.
You can't, you can't all in favor?
That's the one. Okay, no. I, I'm not the only one, I mean, you have to have the You guys for all of them, go ahead.
I'm, we can ask the question.
Okay, so three, two, it passes.
Oh, you said no? You don't wanna ask? Why don't you wanna ask?
It doesn't cost anything to ask.
I know, it's a, well, pass, no.
Okay, well, I, I would consider changing my vote, I'm not interested in doing that.
Uh, supervisor's request.
Uh, I would like to continue this meeting.
Oh, no, we're getting to number seventeen.
Oh, gotcha, sure, okay.
One more answer. No list.
And that takes you, Mr. Chairman, to the, uh, all the audience families.
I have one.
Yeah.
Catherine Fellmeyer, Newport Drive, exit side, the stop sign coming out of Newport, that's right there on the right, is hidden. And Newport Drive has a lot of people that are strangers because of Marina and the hotel. They come out of Newport, the first thing they see is the stop sign on the other side.
Yeah, they don't know the stop sign, right. I think there was also something about people recognizing it was a one-way, not to turn in on the exit, but that didn't happen.
That, that's, that's
I think we have a sign on the other side.
Separate issue. But the stop sign coming out right from Newport, right by the real estate, is way off to the side. It's not what people see coming out of Newport, along with the stop paint on the ground, which is now faded and worn, along with the stop bar. So I think the C I D needs to please
Is the sign over to the side or covered by plants?
Both.
Both. I mean, you come out of Newport, the only thing you see is the sign going west on forty-one.
You see nothing stopping you before you hit the eastbound traffic coming
That's the D O T.
I'd have to look at it, but maybe there might be the possibility adding a second stop sign on each side of the pavement, and again, maybe refreshing that stop bar.
That So
Is that us or the D O T?
De- depends on where it falls as far as right away.
Yeah, yeah, if you can look at that. Because I wonder if that had anything to do with that accident that happened there.
You come out of Newport, the only thing you see is the one on the
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it gets a little confusing here with the do not enters and so forth like that too, to
Well, I don't think there's really anything here. The one side has, uh, an arrow to say you turn in that way. Because the other thing we heard was leaving, uh, people turn into the way you're leaving. And that's dangerous too. Does the D O T, uh, own the stop sign coming out of Newport now?
I'm sorry.
Does the D O T take care of the stop sign coming out of Newport Drive?
No.
It's ours?
Okay, good, I'll take a look there.
Okay.
Okay, what else do we need to do then? Is that, oh, you got a question? Because I gotta, I, I signed my legal stuff yesterday, now they tell me I gotta go, so. Can we chew on the rest of the
New Johnson two zero five Sunrise K and I'm a homeowner. I don't represent the residents of Newport, but yes, we have spoken about some of these issues. And one of them was to meet with Mr. La Castro regarding exactly what you were talking about, the comparison of being hooked up with the county versus continuing to put money into our water plant. So my request to you is that, um, there be some representation of, of residents when you meet with Mr. La Castro, so that we can also be hearing, uh, the discussion.
He's gonna, he's gonna be in a meeting here.
Yeah, let's just have him come here.
Come in here, I thought that's what you want.
Uh, that's not
No, two separate things.
You know, typically, the way these start is staff and staff
Right.
meet to discuss, usually utility staff, county commissioner, and staff just to get a feel for this county staff as to the interest, and it's and that's how these usually begin, I mean
Yeah, if there's some interest.
It's way at the form of the stage, they may say no.
Yeah, right.
However, however, he's also our representative.
Yeah.
And, and he spoke to us here, and he said, "My door is open to any of you anytime." So we do have the right to just go to him and ask the same question.
Can I ask you something? Why, why hasn't any of this come before the board? Why is there a separate meeting? Why, it just adds confusion to everything going on.
We discussed this recently, and we saw as new businesses was gonna be discussed, and that's why we're here, we're listening to this.
Right, but why the meeting, why, why didn't we come forward?
Exactly what I'm saying, should we be putting more money
Anyway, you can close up for me.
Looked like a disability, I'm booking up. So anyway, I'm just saying that the residents would like to be involved
Because I got, I got a phone.
In the discussion.
In this, why don't we have, uh, why don't, why don't we have La Castro come?
Again, the board is allowed discretion, but typically, and no offense to any members of the community or residents, but typically you have professional staff of both organizations get together. Are, say, are you all interested county utilities, acquiring, or owning the Port Allen's utility facilities? The board has asked us to talk with you about whether you have any interest. If you have interest, tell us. What are your parameters? And then we have that discussion, we come back, and then the board makes a decision whether to further engage in pursuing that, based upon that initial conversation. It is way, 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 way to begin.
We're taking step one.
Yeah, this is step one, one, already custom.
But what I'm saying is that we would like to hear first hand.
But let the board get the ball rolling. The ball is not rolling yet. What I heard is there was a meeting of three people where you're gonna go meet with the county commissioner. You doesn't, you don't think that adds confusion to the pot? I mean, we represent this neighborhood, so let us do our job and, and go and get the ball rolling.
Yeah, but what would be the problem with us hearing the discussion at least?
There's no need for it, that's what we're here for.
Well, we want to, I think we have the right to be hearing the discussion with the county.
You have the right to be at these meetings too, you know?
So, so when you have this meeting with Mr. La Castro, could there be
I think it's, it's been said that, that, that's not the time for the community to be involved. It's only an asking. We don't know if we're gonna get an answer yet.
It's two separate, it's two separate things. Let me just, I think what she's saying is, and I get it, listen, La Castro makes himself very, very open, very visible. I like that, he's transparent. It doesn't cost us anything except time to ask him to come out here, and the residents can tell us, ask him any questions, and it doesn't hurt anything, it's exploratory, and they can get it from him. And he doesn't, he's not gonna be able to help you much with what, what the county's gonna do, but he can give you his viewpoint, and that's his job. And so what if a lot of people come to the meeting and say, "We don't want it," like he did? Then we don't need to go further with it. But if they say, "We all want it," then we have an impetus to do it. But either way, it's pretty easy to just have him come, and, and just so you know, and, and this is probably even a better thing for you to do, rather than have him come to a C I D meeting, arrange a meeting yourself at the restaurant or someplace, and he'll come. And, and we won't be there. And have him, and you can, I'm serious about this, he's happy to do it, he'll come and talk to you. I'm not saying you will, but don't waste his time, try and have a good showing, market it, advertise it, have it at the restaurant, whatever you gotta do, he'll come, and then just talk to him and get some answers from him. But I will caution you, he's not gonna have much to tell you about the county, even though he's our representative, because it's a whole different thing. But he'll be happy to hear what you got to say, you know, and it might help going forward, who knows?
And just one other question. I look at capital improvement plan, and see what the anticipated future costs are going to be. And what I don't see, and I think this is probably the next step for the board, and maybe you've already done this, this is just an example from Sunset K Master Association, their proposed cash flow method reserve plan, where they go out the next five years and are saying what we need to be putting money toward. And Paul Montes did sort of say that because they itemized it by one to five year, five to ten. Anyway, is this something that would be appropriate for the board to do and then have available to the residents? So we know in the future what these infrastructure costs are going to be.
I feel if, if we were to do that right now, it would cause a great amount of panic with, it would start something rolling like our assessments are going up, how much are they going up? Because I, I've heard that already. But what we're working on, and I think that probably will happen, but what I would like to see is the sale of this land, that is a big impact on that schedule. And it, I can't say now we're gonna sell it and let's, you know, say how long, you know, we'll work on these capital projects. The engineering firm has told us, this is what you should schedule for this amount of time. And I don't think we're at the point right now to spread it out financially over all the years. I mean, it, it can be done, it's an easy spreadsheet, but I don't know the seriousness of it, if it means that's exactly what we're gonna stick to. I don't know, and right now, unfortunately I don't know, and right now, unfortunately, you'll get something that comes up almost on an emergency basis that we have to take care of, and that'll skew that report.
These are always, these, these are always changing every year, but it's an anticipation, and it shows people what, what needs there are in the near future. And speaking of, of, you know, people being concerned and causing a panic, there already is a lot of discussion, and there are.
There's a lot of hearsay out there.
Of course, that's why we're at these meetings trying to get the information. But there are people here who, instead of getting two million for the fifteen, for the parcel thirteen, may be willing to have their assessments increased so that we don't have an R B part.
But there's a lot of people don't want them increased, so it's both.
That's, that's where the discussion is going on among the residents. So, um, I am requesting that either the board do this, or I will take the Paul Montes report and try to spread it out myself so that people have some idea of what all these supposed new infrastructure costs in the near future.
I, I think what you're looking at is like an H O A does a reserve fund. I, okay, because we do the same thing. We know that we built, we put roofs on four years ago, we have thirty years before we're gonna have to do it again. So for the next thirty years, we're putting money away every year for thirty years, so we have the money that, that doesn't work with. We can't say that the pipe will fail on, you know, two thousand nine and has to be replaced. What you do is you have a list of what needs to be done, and we do that as money is available, number one, and need. So I, I don't think, I think you're trying to equate two different things. We can't make a reserve fund for the pipe that goes across the road, a reserve fund for the, um, uh, for the generator, a reserve fund for, that I don't think will work. We just, we know what we need to do, and as we get to that point where we can do it, we do it.
The Paul Montes has already done that.
Just recently, just recently.
So all I'm asking for is to do something like this spreadsheet so that the residents can see what Paul Montes believes will be our infrastructure costs. And I think it's also important that a lot of it is related to the water plant. And I think the residents really need to see that in some form. So that's my request to the board to provide, I, and I'm assuming you've already got a meeting, um, based on this.
Are we still working?
Now we haven't.
We're still working on that.
Is the C I P report online?
Priorities for the, for the.
Still working on that with the engineering firm.
Deborah. The C I P report is actually online. Yeah, so I mean, people can go look at it right there.
Yeah, she has.
Yeah, they can look at it right there, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, I will put it on a spreadsheet like this for myself, so that I can see.
Well, I'll do that also, but I don't think it's gonna give the information we're looking for.
When we put together the C I P too, we, we tried to look at maybe spending X amount of dollars per year or two to try to keep it, keep the assessments at a somewhat level rate.
Yeah.
Again, it's not that hard to refine that spreadsheet as we go forward to and start nailing down, here one, we wanna do this, this, you know, we already identified some, one of your projects are ready, the generator or the, the irrigation pump station, those kind of things, so.
And during, yeah, like during the, the budget process, we review all this and try to see, you know, what we need, what really needs to be done, and we need to plan the budget for it and do it. But do we wanna raise assessments and everything? And in other words, if, if we follow this line by line, I guarantee you it's gonna say raise, raise assessments.
Well, I've done.
And then why even start that rumor if we sell this property and we don't have to raise assessments?
Because there are people who would rather have their assessments raised than put an R B part in there.
Well, I'm not one of those.
And we understand that, we, we, we know that.
That's opening up to all this information to the residents, so that they can express their opinion and say what they would rather have.
Well.
Would you rather have this R B.
I've heard from a lot of people, but I've heard from twenty-eight people, that's not the majority, I'm not, sorry.
No, no.
Just this.
We're just trying to open up communications between the residents.
That's the meeting.
I was gonna say, you have it right here, just like you're doing right now.
Yeah.
This is the time to come and talk to us, and we can, we can talk to you, but.
When all of us here.
Next door, we'll talk to you.
Yeah, I don't wanna read it on next door and think that's the, everybody feeling that way, I would like to see the people here.
You know, we're up against, Deborah, the, I just looked on next door and there's like over eight hundred people now on this next door. But look in this room.
Yeah.
And I put on there every month when the meeting is, what time it is, this is your time to ask questions. And this month I even put, if you're uncomfortable speaking in public, send any one of us your question, we'll get an answer for you and we'll give you a response. It's not you. There's two people watching and a handful of people in here out of over eight hundred people.
But it's a start, people starting.
It's a start, but you see what I'm saying? There's a lot of apathy until the bill comes, and then it's too late.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
But I'm gonna do that spreadsheet out of curiosity.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other comments? If you're ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, no, continue the meeting.
Motion to continue the meeting. December third at nine thirty A M at this location to consider items ten G like in George and twelve B like in Boyd.
Do we also have to?
December third.
December third, okay.
Friday to Friday, December third.
So.
I will be calling. They're reading.
Yeah, that's my motion, someone's gonna second.
I second it.
So, Chair, can you call for a vote?
Yeah.
New Chair.
New Chair.
Uh, all in favor?
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
No, you're not adjourned.
Oh, right, we just said we're continuing, we're continuing, yay, let's go.
Mine.